For the Town of Newbury, for the February 5th, 2020. My name is Pete Pecos, to my left is...
Leslie Matthews.
Woody Knight.
Adam Costa, Town Council.
Larry Murphy.
Martha Taylor, Town Planner.
And I'm going to read that right now we have George Morse, who will be participating remotely to tonight's public hearing as well, due to personal illness. According to with 940 CMR 29.10, all planning board votes will be done by roll call. Additionally, I have Mary Stowe, who will also be participating remotely to tonight's public hearing by telephone due to personal disability. In accordance with 940 CMR 29.10, all planning board votes will be roll called. So George and Mary are right here. So we have a seat for them. George and Mary, would you like to say hello?
Hi, everybody.
Hi, everybody.
Everyone, they're there. All good. All right, we're going to start off with a couple appearances. We do have a public hearing that's going to start at 7:15, so we might have to interrupt our appearances. We'll see how we go. So first, we have Jeff Hoffman from Millennium Engineering. Submission of an A and R for lot line changes 64 and 68 Green Street, map R 35 lots 21A and 21. Owners Samuel Specter, 64 Green Street, 68 Green Street Realty Trust, Eva M. Jackson, trustee 68 Green Street. Hi, Chris.
Hello, Jeff Doppelganger again.
All right, Chris, why don't you do your full name?
Chris York, Y-O-R-K. So this is a pretty simple one. It says they in our parcel conveyance at 64 and 68 Green Street. Basically, the intent is to take, I'll read the plan purpose note. The purpose of this plan is to define and convey parcel X to Samuel Specter from 68 Green Street Realty Trust. So apparently parcel X is a part of lot A1. The intent is to convey it to existing lot 2, which is 64 Green Street. The intent is because the existing barn out there now is on, it's not on their property, so they're going to convey this 8,000 square foot piece of property to them. So they'll be in conformance.
Do we have any questions or concerns?
No, it's gone through a couple rounds of review. I think it's pretty straightforward. This is being done in preparation for the 68 Green Street definitive subdivision plans the board had seen in the approved preliminary plan previously. So this is kind of the next step during this conveyance. And if the plan will be coming...
Yes, next week. So yes, parcel proposal lot A1 will be that proposed three lot subdivision coming your way.
So this is basically to correct the non-conformity on lot 2? Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, an encroachment.
Any questions from board members?
Nope.
George, you're good?
I'm good.
All right. That being the case, I would entertain a motion to accept the submission.
I move to accept the submission.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
She's not here.
Okay, I'm going to have to do a roll call vote. George, how would you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how would you vote?
I vote yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Woody, I'm going to ask you for your opinion.
Sure.
Thank you. And I would vote yes. Thank you. So we are set with that.
I grabbed the file, it's in the bag.
Okay. So this is signed tomorrow.
The thing? Thank you. All right, next on our agenda is Adam True, requests for an extended tripartite agreement for subdivision of 255 High Road in Curly Way. Probably over there. Just identify yourself.
Adam True, 255 High Road.
Hi, Adam.
Hi. So we are just talking about a tripartite extension so that we can get everything closed out. The original one had lapsed almost, I realize now, back in 2018. So now we're trying to extend it to March or April of 2020.
It's June.
It's June, June of 2020.
June 30th.
Everything is actually done. We're just going to try to get everything together, go through the formalized meetings, and get the review by Joe Swaska.
Martha, do we have any questions? Because I heard that you worked on this over the weekend. On Saturday.
This has gone through a few rounds of review as well. So, you know, we'll need to start the closeout process, which hasn't been done yet. Get the ASBILs.
Gather the ASBILs. Once we get this extension signed, we can gather the ASBILs and I can come back to the next possible meeting and start to close the process.
So did you get copies signed by the bank?
That was the only thing, is that I got that response back today. So they weren't able to sign everything today, get it notarized and all that. So I'll have to go to the next meeting.
Okay.
So do we want to hold action on this until the next meeting?
Yeah, there's nothing to sign. You should have the copies signed by the bank.
Okay.
Actually, a couple of questions?
Sure.
I assume this has been approved as the form by council?
It follows form that was by council before.
And what was the reason? Why is the need for the extension? Was there a mistake in the original or did you just need a little more time to get it closed?
I believe there was originally a mistake in the original because it was only one year from the date of start, which probably would not have been reasonable to do, to get the road in, all the houses, close it out, and get the associations conformed. So I think it was always supposed to be probably 2019 closeout date. We kind of just missed that. So we needed the extension as soon as we got there.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
So I guess we'll see at the next meeting. Hopefully with all paperwork, we can button this up.
Thank you.
Sound good? Great, thanks, Adam. All right, we have a minute, a couple minutes to get together for the public hearing. Do we want to continue on or do we want to get the boards in?
I think half of the time, everybody gets settled.
So let's ask the boards to come in. So we're just going to take two minutes to try to get all of our board members in so that we can start our 7:15 meeting. So Mary and George, I'm going to have you guys hold on for a couple more minutes, okay?
No problem.
Great, thanks. So do you want to read the, when we get to the... Let's read the... Continue public hearing?
Yes.
Let me decide on anything.
Make a little room for you, Mike.
I'm good, thank you.
It looks like snow, it sounds like. Yeah, I don't know. I didn't hear any specific amounts, but it sounds like it's going to start off a mess and then with a lot of rain. Because it's saying something. Like the Penn Stadium morning comes around six inches. Is that what's, that's the biggest storm we've had over here? Yeah, it is. And I'll take that. Thank you. Thanks. Heard on the radio in the way over here, we were supposed to hear substantial amount of rain on Friday. I guess it depends on where you are. January, January was such a dry month. There's that thing, I was looking for that.
Don't squish George and Mary.
You just cut cable over the whole country? One quick whoop.
Okay, we're going to, at this point in time, move into our continued public hearing. So I'm going to have our clerk read that, please.
Continued public hearing modifications to a previously approved site plan Newbury Golf Center 131, 133, and 151 Scotland Road, map lot 43, lots 2, 11, and 4B. Applicant Eric Sorensen, President, Newbury Golf Center, Incorporated.
So we are considering an application for modification of our previously approved site plan submitted by Eric Sorensen, President of Newbury Golf Center, Inc. For Newbury Golf Center 131, 133, 135. The assessors map are 43, lots 2, 11, 4B. The applicant requests approval of plan to restore areas of disturbance outside of the approved limit of work of the project. We would note that this requires a supermajority of the planning board of three or five votes. The original site plan approval was granted on November 15th of 2017. And just to reinforce that George Morse and Mary Stowe will be participating remotely, and we have them on telephone.
All right, I would like a motion to open the selectmen's meeting?
I move to open.
All those in favor? And do you want to read that? Our public hearing notice, Alicia?
Board of Selectmen is considering an application submitted by Eric Sorensen, President, Newbury Golf Center, Incorporated, for modification to the special permit for the Newbury Golf Center 131, 133, and 151 Scotland Road. Assessors map are 43, lots 2, 11, and 4B. The applicant requests approval of a proposed plan to restore areas of disturbance outside the approved limit of work for the project. Note, requires a supermajority, four to five votes of the selectmen. Since JR has recused himself, decision will require all four remaining members to vote in favor. Original special permit granted November 15th, 2017. Damon Jesperson will serve as acting chair for the selectmen's public hearing.
So what we're going to do tonight is first I'm going to have Damon make a brief announcement.
Yeah. So I will periodically have to get up and walk around tonight. I had surgery yesterday and I can't sit still for very long. So please excuse the disturbance.
But there won't be any disturbance. So what we're going to be doing this evening is we're going to have a continuation. We're going to ask for a status report for what's been going on at the site since our December 17th public session, public hearing. And then after that, we're going to have some letters read into the record. Then we'll have an opportunity for planning board and board of selectmen to have questions to the applicant. And then we will reach correspondence from interested parties, and then we'll open it up for public discussion. So that's going to be kind of our agenda. So at this time, I think Eric, I'm going to ask for a status report, including a detailed description of the work done since the 17th of December to stabilize the site in compliance with our motion of the 17th of December.
Good evening. I want to put this post.
No, you can stay right there.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so since the 17th of December, what we've done, obviously stabilization was the number one thing that we left last time with. We've stabilized it. It's an ongoing process. Obviously, we've brought in over 200 hay bales, silt fence, straw wattle, but we've obviously installed all the catch basins in here. We've put the infiltration systems in, the large infiltration system. Still has one more thing to be finished. We've applied hay all on the front of the site, which you can see from Scotland Road. There has been some mistakes on the plan, which we've had to adjust with some pipes. And we've been in touch, obviously, with Joe and Mike, my engineer, has been in touch with the changes. Other than that, up top in the landing area, we've hayed and silt fenced, that whole non-jurisdictional wetland. This landing area is still an ongoing process, which it's holding up, obviously, but we do need to final grade that and get that stabilized. Other than that, Miller has been away the last couple of weeks on another job. He is coming back. We're just trying to figure out exactly when. With the weather being so good, we didn't realize it was going to be such great working conditions. So his job is taking a little longer than he thought, but hopefully next week he will be back. Other than that, I think that's kind of where we stand with Eric.
Do you have a revised schedule and sequence of work for buttoning up the site for winter?
I will have one, a meeting with Miller tomorrow. I've spoke with him, trying to get an accurate one for you that...
So I don't think we have one from our last meeting either.
We don't, because all we did is stabilize. So I didn't want to put something in front of you that was inaccurate. All we were working on was stabilization.
Okay, and could you help describe to the boards what measures have been taken to address this storm water runoff of the site?
Sure. The catch basins installed, they're obviously not online, but we've created check dams, silt fence, straw waddles. We've controlled it, obviously, working with Mike from Cameron and Moran, just to where the runoff is going. The last site, the last storm two weeks ago on that Sunday morning, we got over an inch of rain, there was clear water running off the site, so there wasn't silt. You know, our next step is to fix the infiltration system. There was some erosion at the front of the site near a pipe. We know we need to fix that, those are our next steps. And obviously, continue with the stabilization before we go forward with anything else. So we know where we need to go. It's just obviously getting it. We have a plan, just putting it in action.
Okay, anything else you want to report to the boards? That being said, yeah.
Okay. Going to read into the record a letter sent by our council to Eric and Mr. Rosen. This was sent by email and first-class mail on January 17th. Dear Mr. Rosen, reference is made to above identified matter. As you know, in this office, serves as Town Council of the Town of Newbury. We've been asked to write you concerning the above property, the property in more particularly ongoing and serious violations of the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board's December 17th, 2019 decision by your client, Newbury Golf Center, Inc., NGC. After thorough review and inspection of the activities which have occurred and which continue to occur on the property since December 17th, 2019, the town has determined that NGC is not in compliance with the direction it received from the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board on December 17th, 2019. Session of the public hearing to cease all work except for stabilization of the site. A true and accurate copy of the vote and decision of the Board of Selectmen and Planning Board at the joint December 17th, 2019 meeting, at which you and your client were present and heard in person, is attached here too. Please be advised, the town intends to take legal action to address these violations. Over the past week, the town has noted the following violation of the Board's December 17th, 2019 decision. NGC was ordered to stop all work other than stabilization for the winter season on December 17th, 2019, and yet NGC allowed its electrician to continue to work. The town discovered this when it reviewed the NGC's building permit on January 9th. Two, NGC has not submitted SWIP reports since November 1st, 2019. The staff noted this to us on January 13th. NGC cut into the short game area where it had been specifically ordered not to do so. The town observed this on the site work, site walk on January 9th. NGC cut the driveway out to Scotland Road when it was specifically told not to do so. The town observed this on January 16th. NGC has failed to stabilize the site in the months since it was directed to do so. If the stabilization of the property is not substantially completed within one week of receipt of this letter, the town will start issuing fines on a daily basis until the required work is completed. The area of concerns are, in order of priority, the landing area that feeds into the wetlands, the short game area that was not supposed to be disturbed until all stabilization of previous exposed areas was complete, exposed slopes along the future driveway, water leaving the site via the driveway, completion of stormwater drainage control needed for stabilization, the main retention pond which may overtop. The town will not prescribe how NGC addresses these issues. The town officials are available to discuss recommendations made by NGC's engineer and site contractor if needed to ensure that these recommendations are consistent with the direction NGC has received from the two boards. I'd also recommend that your client call for inspections before the deadline in case there's more work that must be done. Please be advised that at a minimum, the town intends to issue fines immediately for items one above. It will then commence issuing fines for the violations identified as three and four immediately, and to start fining for items two and five if the NGC is not substantially compliant within a week of this letter, i.e. January 24th. Fines will be assessed each day for each violation. In addition to fines, the town may be compelled to pursue further legal action, which may include filing a lawsuit, seeking an injunction, mandating NGC's compliance, and then seeking additional security for the completion of the above work, as well as reimbursement for any legal and court fees incurred by the town. Additionally, the town may choose to assert any other claims it may have concerning this matter, including but not limited to the cost of diverting and deploying any town personnel and/or town resources, as well as other damages it may have incurred due to NGC's unpermitted activities on the site. Of course, it is in everyone's best interest to avoid the time and expense of litigation. NGC's prompt attention to this matter would therefore be greatly appreciated as that is the only way that NGC and the town can avoid further legal action. Thank you for your attention. Brian.
So that letter was from the Town's Council to the applicant's attorney, Mr. Rosen? Do you want me to read the response?
Sure.
Okay. This letter is dated the 21st of January. It's to Brian Weiner, 30 Green Street, Newburyport, Mass. Regarding Newbury Golf Center 131, 133, 135 Scotland Road, Newbury, Mass. And this is from the applicant, Eric Sorensen. Dear Mr. Weiner, this is a response to your letter sent on January 17th, 2020, which is written on behalf of Newbury Board of Selectmen and Planning Board. I would like to address the letter and the alleged violations in order. Number one, the claim that electrical work was done after December 17th is inaccurate. After the decision was handed down from the boards to seesaw work except stabilization work, the electrician who had been set up for months with his tools on site was notified immediately. He arrived mid-morning to clean up his workstation and tools. He was on site for approximately 1.5 hours. He asked to continue working in an email sent to the town, Damon Jesperson and Peter Pecos, but his request was denied. The work was signed off by the electrical inspector. Was work done prior to the, work done was done weeks prior to the December 17th, 2019. The inspector was called prior to December 17th, and the building permit was left inside the building for him to sign, which he did after December 17th. The electrician was not present at the time of the inspection. We are in disagreement with this alleged violation. Number two, erosion control reports have been compiled and submitted to the town staff. We accept responsibility for the delay in submitting the reports, and will be sure to send them immediately to the town moving forward. Number three, the short game area was in no way developed or shaped by recent construction activities. As explained during the January 9th, 2020 site walk with town staff and board chairs, the minor disturbance was directly related to drainage system installation, which falls under the direct direction of site stabilization. A substantial amount of historic filling materials, stumps, trash, debris needed to be removed from beneath the infiltration system, which was not anticipated. This required clear access by a large excavator, as well as a path down to the area with many crushed stone deliveries needed to backfill the hole. Unfortunately, the grades around the infiltration system are such that the work needed to be performed from the side of the short game area, not the driveway. Additionally, if one looks at the design plans, there's approximately eight feet of fill material specified on the side of the system facing Scotland Road. Again, all the disturbance in this area, small section of the quote "short game area" was related to installing the drainage system. Erosion control measures including hay, straw swells, silt fence, and stone check dams were installed in the area, which are all in place during the site walk. These measures have been successful in stabilizing the area around the new infiltration system, and no future work is planned on the short game area until approved by the town. We are in disagreement as to this alleged violation. Number four, the recent work at the new driveway entrance of Scotland Road was directly related to the installation of the outlet pipe of the second infiltration system. On January 13th, 2020, there was an email sent to Joe Swaska, to Mike Lanahan, about the design errors on the approved plans whereby the pipe was specified at an elevation above the new driveway surface. On January 15th, Mike Lanahan, I'm sorry, Mike, returned Joe's email laying out the engineering field change. On January 15th, I had, I personally had a conversation with Joe on the site about the change, which he was in agreement was the best solution to a problem. The change involved a three-foot deeper trench excavation and a 40-foot pipe extension. In order to execute this change, excavators had to be, had to disturb the soil along Scotland Road, which needed to be cleaned up and regraded. Then, in order to stabilize the disturbed soil, the contractor covered it with crushed stone and graded it to send the water in a proper direction away from Scotland Road. The curb cut was made and the swell along Scotland Road was created as per approved plan through the driveway, though the driveway was not used until it was cleared by the town. We are in disagreement to this alleged violation. Number five, NCG has failed to, quote, "NCG has failed to stabilize the site in the months since it was directed to do so," close quote. We are in disagreement with this statement. There have been nearly 200 bales of hay spread in place throughout the site, silt fence and straw waddles, stone check dams, and other erosion control methods have also been implemented in the last 30 days. This has enabled NCG to hail all the exposed soil along the new driveway, create multiple hay check dams in the new driveway entrance, address the landing area and the inlet and outlet of the pipes under the driver. We are in disagreement with this alleged violation. As stated in the letter, as the quote "areas of concerns," we provide the following comments. Number one, the landing areas that feeds into the non-jurisdictional wetland has been addressed with multiple check dams, hail bays, and stone dams from both sides of the wetland. It has layer of hay that has been spread bottom of the hill, as well as for added protection. Number two, the short game area, as stated above, was only disturbed to allow for construction of the subsurface infiltration system. This is an approved activity as it directly relates to stabilization, stabilizing the site. Working with our engineer, the erosion control plan was implemented and has proven itself through multiple storms. Number three, all the slopes in the new driveway have been hayed and additional hay bale check dams have been placed along the driveway. Pictures were taken prior to the snowstorm, a few which are included at the end of this letter. Number four, water leaving the site has been addressed on the new driveway with proper grading direction, directing the water to the finished graded swell, which is, which is a collection area for the water on the approved plan. Multiple check dams and hay bale erosion controls have been set up along the side of the driveways. Number five, completion of stormwater drainage control needed for stabilization is in process. We are finishing all the drainage, all the catch basins are now installed. Both infiltration systems are close to completion, along with piping. Number six, main retention pond as of January 18th, 2020, was completely empty. We have pictures to document this going forward. If it remains full for an extended period, we will then use a sump pump, we will then use a pump to lower it. We strongly disagree with the statements in this letter and feel most of them are subjective. To issue fines on the above matters, when the town officials were contacted and aware of these situations, leads me to believe our communication is not going through the proper channels. We would like to suggest a meeting with town officials to lay out a plan where there is one person from the town and one person from NCG that all communication flows through. This will eliminate any further misunderstandings or miscommunications. I feel this is the best course of action going forward and will be the most efficient for both parties. I look forward to meeting the town officials to discuss these matters further. Thank you, Eric Sorensen, President, Newbury Golf Center. And there are three pictures which are also submitted, but I can't describe those. But they demonstrate hay along the slope, along, continues to Scotland Road with bales, a silt dam, and hay on another slope.
And then we have received a letter from Doug Packer. To whom it may concern, on 2/5/2020, I performed a site visit at the Newbury Golf Center in the presence of Martha Taylor, Pete Pecos, Michael... How do you say your last name?
Lahan.
Lahan. And the owner, Eric Sorensen, for the purpose of determining if the site has been stabilized in compliance with the commission's order of conditions. I find that the site lacks sufficient stormwater best management practices to maintain control. A short list of concerns would include, but not be limited to, the topography of the site has changed to the extent that the approved stormwater plans are no longer applicable to the site. The subcatchment watershed needs to be recalculated and the stormwater adjustments made prior to additional grading. The changes must go through approval. There are now three-plus ponds on the property with one on the original plans. The area west of the tees is a large sub watershed that drains to the non- The area west of the tees is a large sub watershed that drains to the non-jurisdictional wetland. This area is not stabilized and as such is overwhelming the downstream areas. The non-jurisdictional wetland is receiving more water than the B M Ps that are in place can handle. The result is that the jurisdictional wetland front and center and to the east of the new driveway is flooding, causing failure of the system parallel to the old driveway. The storm scepters have been installed contrary to the approved plans and the supplier's specifications. One of the features of the system is an isolator row that contributes important functions, such as time of concentration and total suspended solids removal. It is also, it also provides for maintenance of the system over time. The isolator row was not installed. The overflow pipe that exists, exits the system, sorry. The overflow pipe that exits the system towards Scotland Road has failed, likely to water back up in front of the storm scepter and following the crushed stone pipe embedded, embedment to the surface. The new driveway was cut in and as a result, all of the detention and stone check dams were removed and replaced with three rows of unstaked hay bales on the driveway surface. This area is arguably less stable as a result. Respectfully submitted Doug Packer.
So at this time, I'd like to ask any, any board members or board of select members to ask question or comment on what has been presented. We have a, a letter from the Towns Council to the applicant's attorney. We have a response from the applicant. And then we had a site visit this morning, which I was present at. Eric was there, Eric's engineer was there. Doug was there, Martha was there. Joe was not there, our, our engineer, but he had been, he has been to the site and we have his reports as well. So, questions? Discussion?
I have a question. And I'm just, just for clarification, as I drove by this afternoon, I noticed where the water runoff is, that comes down to Scotland Road was really failing on one side. And we really haven't had any severe weather to make that erosion as, as great as it seems to be.
Right, so that's a new, a new pipe that was put in. Mike, do you want to address, address that? The failure with the.
The outlet pipe that we were looking at.
Do you want to come up and you can address that?
Yeah, Mike Lahan with the Moore and Cameron Group. So the, the pipe that you're speaking of, which plan it's shown on here. Again, these aren't my plans. I'm just the consulting engineer at the moment, so I wasn't responsible for the original design. But. So the subsurface infiltration system, that is the subject of this discussion about the short game area, which is here's the short game area. Subsurface infiltration system is, is located off to this corner of it. And there's an outlet pipe right here. And essentially what we kind of uncovered, or let's say unpacked today. I was, you know, I was kind of talking to Doug Packer out on site and trying to determine kind of how this minor failure occurred. It's really, it's not a major failure at all. It's just some soil has slumped off of this slope here. And what we, what we kind of figured out is that likely what happened is there's a, the access road that again is the subject of this discussion is kind of built to bring, you know, access kind of around it here, so you can, you can construct it. And because this system is still not complete, that allowed some runoff to kind of flow and the system is not backfilled. So there's actually runoff that's kind of working its way down toward this system. And it actually kind of came right toward this pipe as well. And so the pipe was bedded with, you know, crushed stone or whatever the pipe was bedded with allowed runoff to kind of work its way down. And then essentially it seeks the path of least resistance and we think it may have kind of flowed around the pipe. This all might be a bit much for some, some, some people aren't familiar with site work, but. So, so essentially you, you had water kind of intrusion coming down toward, toward the outlet pipe and then it was able to seek the path of least resistance through the backfill around that pipe, which then just allowed some of the soil to wash out from, from the top of the slope. So the intention here is that, of course, if the system had been backfilled like I would prefer it is, that wouldn't have happened. So we're, we're, again, we're kind of, kind of, kind of waiting on the contractor to, to get out here and address this, so that this could have been backfilled. And then again, that wouldn't, that wouldn't have occurred because you wouldn't have had the, the water coming down and having access to, to this. It would all be, have been covered. So, I was a little bit confusing, but.
So I'll just clarify, there's a mound and there was a pathway cut through the mound, probably about three or four foot high pathway, which, which created an access road, if you will, which then allowed for this pit to be configured, which, which is the infiltration system, which was then put into place. And then this pipe came from the infiltration system and then the stone, which was around the pipe, was the conduit that the water just followed. So now you have water coming out alongside of the pipe, as opposed to going through the pipe.
Starting from the beginning of where the pipe is?
Probably coming down that access road hill, which was the part cut in. Did I, did I explain that correctly?
Yeah, I'd say so.
And I'm not even in this stuff.
So I have a question.
Yes.
So it was my understanding that there was no, that work wasn't supposed to happen, correct? It was supposed to just stop everything, stabilize the site.
And button it up.
And button it up. And that's not what happened, correct?
That is our position.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to, can I, can I respond to that? So the drainage installation was part of what was allowed, because that's kind of part of stabilization is to be able to manage the stormwater. So I would contend that that was, that wasn't allowed activity. I, like I said, I wish it was finished and backfilled right now, but unfortunately I'm not the one out there running the, the job.
So then I'll ask, I'll ask the question, or I'll, I'll discuss, let's not talk about that. So we have the rest of the site that was to have been stabilized. And so on our site walk today, we, we saw a number of ponds and other collections of water. And the question was asked by conservation, what's your estimation of site stabilization? And your response was?
My response was, at this point, I'd like it to be seventy-five, but it's, it's not. And again, I'm not the one out there operating the machine, so I can't, I'm not, there's not much more I can say on that. It's just that I'm, I'm prepared to work with John Miller's available and get that, you know.
I understand this is not, this is not your.
Right.
So basically, the site is not stabilized. That, forget this, this little piece down here. The rest of the site is not stabilized.
I'd say that there's work to be done.
Work to be done. So it's, it hasn't achieved what it's supposed to achieve from our last.
It's, I'd say it's getting, it's, it's, it's getting there. It's not, I, you know, I, there, there's more to be done and I, I say, a lot of that is machine work that Eric's not able to do. So Eric's able to do the handwork and he's done that well. There's some machine work that I need to see done and that's, I think that's some lack of communication with the contractor and getting him kind of out there and getting it done.
All right, appreciate that. Beautiful. Thank you for the clarification. Other questions from board members?
This is Mary Stone.
Hi, Mary.
Hi. I just, I want to go back to a question I asked before. Is there, the stabilizing the site requires a tremendous amount of resources. And I was asked again, are those resources forthcoming from Newbury Golf Center? In other words, we keep coming back to this issue of stabilizing the site. What will it take to stabilize it? Does it take more resources, finances, time, whatever, to do this job?
John Miller's on another job. Obviously, the weather's made good. He took the other job. He's coming back, so it's, he's coming back to, this has nothing to do with finance. It has to do with, basically, he's on another job to finish. He didn't realize the weather, no one realized the weather's going to be the third warmest January ever. You know, we had three feet of snow. There's not much we can do with three feet of snow this time of year. He didn't realize it was going to be so nice, so he couldn't get all this work done. So I don't, I know for taking the other job and coming back to it, do I look at it now like, wow, if I really, if it was going to be this nice, he probably wouldn't have taken it, would've finished this up. So that's kind of, we're standing here with no snow on the ground and workable conditions. So that's where we are right now.
So Mary, I, 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 I understand what you're asking and the one, one directive that we, we asked from our last meeting was the site be stabilized and all efforts be focused on that.
Correct.
Correct, yes. Those are the marching orders from our last meeting in December.
That's correct.
Yes.
So the question is, where are the resources? Why haven't they been applied aggressively to get this done? It's just.
It's very good. To stabilize that site, the whole thing. It was obviously a large task, the, the landing area. We need a machine to move some of that stuff. It can't be done by man. So once John gets back, this, you know, Mike has a plan with firms to be made. You know, I think the front of the site stabilized, all with the hay. And what we need to do there is the back of the site where we need to move some material with machines. The site did hold up. We got over an inch of rain two Sundays ago. Site held up well.
Any other questions from board members? Jeff, do I see something brewing?
The only place that I'd like it to get crystal clear, I'm not positive it can. I think, esoterically, I'd like to know if the existing plans are able to stabilize that site. Because what gets a little hazy for me is where the town will not prescribe how N G C addresses these issues. So if Eric seems to be working in a situation that creates issues with what we want done, are the plans adequate if followed to stabilize that site? Because if he continues, if the town isn't going to really prescribe how he adjusts those issues, it seems like he's going to adjust them in the wrong way, because it seems like he is now. How can we, or am I way off base? How can we make that more clear, I guess? Because we say stabilize the site, but don't do anything else that will cause trouble. I mean, do we need to somehow ask Doug or someone else or Joe, the planning board engineer, to give Eric a step-by-step, step-by-step, step-by-step? So it doesn't get us into this situation again? Because I think, I tried to look on my phone just now, but I think we had a lot of rain coming this weekend, right?
Yeah.
So.
Potentially.
I mean, maybe the town needs to address more how he does these issues, is all I'm saying. And maybe we are, and I don't know what I'm talking about.
My understanding from talking to Doug and Joe is that the town cannot prescribe what the stormwater management system should be. We can approve them once they are proposed by Eric or Cameron Engineering, but we can't say you need to do X, Y, and Z. We just say you have to protect the water leaving the site.
And that makes sense, but it almost seems like we're going around rougher than it's bound, you know?
I, I do. It should, it should be coming from the applicant's engineer what the stormwater management containment system should be. He should be saying, this is what you need to do. We look at it and say, we think that'll do the job. You know, Doug and Joe go out, or they say, no, I don't think that's nearly enough, which is what we have from Doug today.
So the original plan for water containment has been kind of superseded because of conditions that the site is changing as time goes on?
Though, yeah, the stormwater management plan is no longer considered sufficient by Doug. So they will need to submit a new plan.
Somehow, am I kind of clear at all where I'm going? Is what, whoever is going to be the catalyst to create the momentum to produce the whole thing all at once, so that we can move it ahead and not go anywhere, anywhere different than what we're doing? And then I think we'll alleviate the problem of you doing what you're not supposed to be doing. So if what Damon said is true, and I'm sure it is, we can't, if it starts with you guys, you should maybe get everything you intend to do to the appropriate places and follow those detailed estimations of what your energy is going to create at that site, so that you don't go outside the boundaries, whether they work or not. But then you're not going to, if you're doing exactly what has going to change by the time, then you're not going to, you're fine. So I don't know if that makes it, if that's possible, or it might not be possible.
And I'd like to put timelines on that if we can, distinct deadlines, dates.
I mean, the, there are timelines as far as stabilization currently in effect, based on the letter that the Town Council sent. We do not currently have a, a deadline for a new stormwater management plan. As we just received a letter from Doug today, saying that he believes a new plan is necessary.
And that's going to come from them.
That will come from them and go through conservation or stormwater management. I'm not sure who that will be submitted to. Concom.
And that probably should be very detailed. So, you know, you follow it.
Can we put a timeline on that, like a deadline?
We could make a condition. If we, yeah, we could set a condition with a timeline in it. I don't know how much time it will take the engineer to resubmit that, or how that will go as they have changed engineers and. So I, I would, I'm very hesitant to try and submit a, assign a deadline.
It can't be achieved.
That can't be achieved. I don't want to give them an impossible task.
Damon, maybe ask them if it's possible, so we know it's going to, I mean.
Guys have any, either care to speak to this?
Yeah.
Mike, you can come on up, just so you can make sure you're getting picked up by the mic.
So obviously, ever since I've heard you read Doug's letter, I've been thinking about how that can be done and it's not an easy task. It's not an easy task. And I'd like to make, to, to, to further say that the point I tried to make today out on the site, which I, I thought I did, was that in fact, the site, so I'll try to be brief about this, but essentially the stormwater management calcs were originally prepared under an assumption that there was less ledge on the property than is on the property.
So more infiltration would be done on top of what they're done.
So, well, in fact, you would have, so when there's, if, if there's more, so in fact, again, and this is why I've been hammering for the past year, I suppose, is there's just more ledge on the property than was, than was understood at the time of the calculations. I didn't prepare the calculations, but I do know exactly how they, how they work. And when, when, when you have more, more ledge on a property, you have more runoff. So what, what, what I tried to, to make clear was that in fact, I, I'd say that the, the runoff numbers will, will, in the, in the existing condition, so pre, pre-development condition would have increased because there's just more ledge. So that's, that's actually favorable for this project, because in, in theory, you would have actually had higher runoff numbers in the pre-development condition because of, of the amount of ledge on the site. I think Doug understood that. I think a lot of people may not. But, you know, ha- having ledge on a site is similar to having, you know, pavement, impervious roof, you know, it can infiltrate. So, so Doug was questioning and I said, yes, I, I, I agree with you. Things are different out here. But the fact is that there's, there's more. But the fact is that there's more ledge, and we, as engineers, like to, you know, try to accurately model it. But sometimes, you don't know how much ledge is on the site. I think there... The original survey may not have picked up the amount of ledge or the soil testing, because even if, and I explain this, the ledge doesn't need to be on the surface. The ledge can be here.
Down, yes.
And that still acts just like pavement, because the water can't sink into the ground there, because that's so essential, then it can... It'll runoff. So, all that being said, I think the... What ends up happening is now you design a proposed stormwater system, right? Which is what they did to mitigate for the project and try to match those numbers, so that your runoff doesn't increase. So, what I guess what I'm saying is, I think when you consider ledge, you actually would have to mitigate less, because your runoff numbers are higher in the existing condition because of the ledge. So, in the proposed design, they would've actually needed less stormwater management, is what I'm trying to say, if they accurately modeled all the ledge conditions. So, that's favorable for this. I'm saying that I think likely what's designed is suitable, and though things have changed, the fact that there is such a substantial amount of ledge led me to that kind of discussion today. So, I think... I wasn't expecting Doug to go in that direction with it. I'm surprised, actually. It's pretty difficult to redo the stormwater management calcs. And I'm just straight out right now. I can't see... I mean, this is a lot of work to do that. And not only that, I think there's enough unknowns here that I... You know, we... That would entail... That would entail performing an as-built survey, kind of in some ways, because I don't, you know, I... I have to understand what's out there right now. I can't do anything without understanding conditions on the ground, actual elevations. I mean, you're talking about surveying, talking about redoing, rerunning these calculations, trying to, you know, dig into what the previous engineer did. I mean, this is a substantial effort that... Yeah. I mean, like I said, my whole office is straight out right now.
So, can you respond to the storm suckers have been installed contracted approved plans and the supplier specifications? One of the features of the system is an isolator row that contributes important functions such as time of concentration and total suspended solids removal. It also provides for maintenance of the system over time. The isolator row was not installed. Can you speak to that?
Sure.
What that system does? And, you know, that to some of me seems fairly clear as far as a violation in the stormwater plan. So, if you give a little explanation of that, that would be great.
Sure. So, while I do have my own opinions and practice with these subsurface infiltration systems, I, for example, I don't ever use isolator rows in my designs. And I have good reason for that. That being said, I'm not the original engineer. So, you know, there's a couple of things. Part of... When you design stormwater systems, you try to hit eighty percent suspended solids removal. That's what Doug was referring to. We talked about suspended solids. You try to hit eighty percent. You're just trying to clean the water, eighty percent of the suspended solids out of it. And there are ways of achieving that. And an isolator row, it's just not necessary. It wasn't necessary here. The difficulty for me is that it's... This isn't designed in a way that it can be cleaned out, because essentially, you're wrapping a chamber. You have a chamber that's, in this case, they're about thirty inches tall, and you're wrapping it in fabric, and that kind of serves as like a filter. So, the water goes in there, and it kind of has to filter through that. That's all well and good, but it has to be cleaned out. So, what Doug and I did talk about today is that let's kind of modify the design slightly. It won't take much, but make it so perhaps it can actually be cleaned out. So, you know, my original thought was to try to avoid needing to use an isolator row here, because again, I just think it can present a maintenance headache if not able to be cleaned out. And it's not easy necessarily to do that. In the way it was designed, you'd really have to dig it up, because there's no way to access it. It's under the ground, right? I... So, but Doug and I did talk, and I think there could be a modification that could be done whereby a bit larger access port is installed. So, you often have like a riser pipe, but it's usually small. It's just to look in and see if it's full, yeah. And so, in this case, if you make that larger, it may be large enough to allow for cleaning equipment, kind of like cleaning equipment to get in, where you could kind of gently flush it out and try to suck the debris and sediment out. So, still might be tricky to do, but doable. So, I think I'm... I mean, I'm more in support of using it if something can be done to clean it out, because the last thing you want to do is install something that's gonna catch all this debris, and then you can't clean it out. And now, the rest of your system is just kind of sitting there unused, because that part's clogged, that's part's kind of clogged up.
So, simplistically saying it would work in the same way the septic tank would work for if you put in that kind of system to clean it out?
Yeah, it's... Yeah, you could say it's designed to catch solids before it can get into the system. It's same... It is pretty similar. And so, in this way, it would... You need to be able to act to clean it out. So, in talking with Doug, I think we discussed how that could be achieved with relatively minor adjustment. Hopefully, you know, I need to do a little research to make sure we have enough space for the equipment, whatever needs to get down there. But I think it would just be a larger riser, is what we talked about.
You put a big riser on top of it?
Just a large... You know, cut a bigger... Because these chambers are pretty wide, so I think you can get like a twelve-inch pipe riser.
Right, so they go up.
And that might be enough, hopefully.
All right, speak, thanks.
Go ahead.
Up to you. If this was totally grassed in, not going back to the fact that it isn't, but if it were totally grassed in, except for maybe sand in the sand trap, sand going up the road, if it was slippery, if we had a growing of a couple of years here, you're gonna have a lot less sediment that's suspended in the water that moves through the system. So, I wonder, in speaking with Doug or in yourself, is there a way to design something that almost stays open but handles water not totally covered? It should be maintained till this place gets grown in in a couple of years? Because it seems now, except for the natural wetland, which was supposed to have a ditch the full length, it would've sequestered some water before it dipped down into the natural wetland. But if you can find some way to stabilize the site, because a lot of it seems to be running down through the natural wetland and then down the front of the hill, if you can capture the size of the ponds until it gets grassed in, you're gonna have a lot less sediment that's fall until in your system. And then, you could probably close up a lot of these, you know, better management practices, because they're not gonna be trapped in so much sediment. So, maybe there's a way to, in your processing, your new helms, come up with something... I can't be another pond, but maybe some way of, you know, infiltrating, but the talk can still come off it, so you can then, before it goes way underground and has to...
And I think that's what this would achieve, actually, in this case.
What's gonna happen is you're still gonna have mobile sediment for the next year and a half.
Right, right. So, I think that's more support for this theory of, let's put the isolator row in, but let's also make it maintainable, which that wasn't necessarily on the design plan. So, that's, again, relatively minor change, but I think it's something that, and I had been discussing with some of the town staff, how trying to summarize kind of modifications to the plans. For example, these pipes, there was a design error on some pipes here, so we can try to memorialize that. And at the same time, memorialize maybe that piece too, where we specify a better cleanout, let's say. Kind of call it a cleanout, so we can kind of include that in any kind of modification documents.
I'm gonna give you a thirty-second breather.
Go for it.
We were supposed to have a seven forty-five public hearing. That public hearing, which is going to be on the Newberry self-storage, will start right at the conclusion of this, so I just wanted to make that announcement. Thank you, Martha. Thirty seconds.
So, if I could ask a question. How long would it take to get the memorialized, revised plans for stormwater management to the town, so that our engineer and stormwater system, our stormwater team could review it and tell these boards that it's in compliance and will do with the job that needs to be done?
I guess, what do you foresee being part of that? Are you speaking of like the revised stormwater calculations that Doug was talking about? Are you talking kind of about these items, the modifications to the design?
The very least, the modifications to the design. I've not had a chance to speak with Doug about what exactly he feels is necessary for stormwater, but I mean, it is fairly clear from his... These changes must go through approval, in all caps, that I think he may be indicating that a new stormwater approval must be sought and granted, so...
There's some other things that we've been discussing. On the site this morning, we had this seven hundred-foot trench, which was in the, on the plant, kind of the upper right corner there. And that was part of the calculations, as part of the stormwater management system. And that can't be built as designed, because it turns out that it's on ledge, so that's being eliminated.
So, that was additional on the natural wetland?
Well, it's on the...
It's on the top here. It's on the top side.
At the top, at the top. And we also noticed that there's a pond up there, which, you know, we were told this morning is going to have to stay there to handle some of the stormwater management as well. So, there are changes. There are new sub-chastrin areas that are probably there, other changes due to topography and alleged things that need to be addressed.
And these changes haven't been discussed. And I think that's another one of the frustrating pieces here, is things happen, there's no discussion, and then we're left with... Situation gets more complicated.
And there has been discussion about the trench, and that's in the works of some of the...
I think the changes were in regard to like the fact that, as I understand it, I wasn't necessarily part of the very... I mean, I've come in kind of halfway through, but as I understood it, they were kind of, understanding the nature of the situation, they were given some creative liberty with how this gets shaped. So, I'd say that that... There was actually that creative liberty was kind of granted. And I think that was probably part of the fact that there was actually a kind of a survey bust, so to speak, up here, whereby the survey data was incorrect that was used originally, and then it had to be revised. And so, I think it was probably some major headaches for lots of people when that happened. But as I understand it, there was creative liberty granted for shaping this landing area. In other words, didn't need to be built exactly per plan, as long as the intent and the stormwater was handled in a similar fashion. Didn't need to be the exact same locations. So, I just wanted to mention that before.
Is that based on the topography of the land?
Yeah, that was discussed throughout the... Because of the ledge out there.
That's when you said you were gonna... You were gonna say you were... That was when you said you were gonna work with the features and just make them feature.
We talked about it today with Margaret here. You know, in front of that grassy field, that ledge is so hard. I mean, it's out of the... Took us two days to hammer. That's how hard that ledge was. It really shouldn't have crossed.
Are you still hammering?
No.
So, I just have a question I need clarification on. From what I think I'm reading, from what Doug is saying, is that the current stormwater plans that are before the board are no longer applicable to the site due to the changes that were made on the site. Is that what I'm hearing? Does everybody else understand that?
That's how I'm reading Doug's letter.
Okay. So, we need to get a new set of stormwater plans, because the stormwater plans we have aren't inactive. So, I think one of the things we need to do is request that. And that's all I have. That's my only thought.
Are there other questions, comments from the board at this point?
Quick, one question. What are the fines now that are actively being fined? How much are they daily?
The fines are three hundred dollars a day.
Per violation.
Per violation.
Per violation? So, we're talking like three hundred dollars a day?
No, the electrical fine was a one-time fine.
Okay.
I believe the SWIP reports have been submitted, and so that fine is no longer going on. Have to go back to the letter.
But we've received nothing on the fine.
So, the fines on two will not be happening, because the SWIPs were set. The stabilization of the site is, by all accounts, not done. So, that's one will be going forward. Three and four, I believe, will be going forward, which is the cutting into the T-area and the cutting into the road, unless you guys feel that that was sufficiently stabilized on the sidewalk. So, I think one, three, four, and five, probably. One... No, one is done. Three, four, and five will probably be continuing or starting.
So, it's three hundred dollars a per...
Yeah, so it'd be nine hundred dollars a day.
So, it's like, is that twenty-seven grand a month?
You can do the math as well as I can.
So, what do we need to move this project forward? I guess that's my question.
Yeah, really.
So, as of right now, we're still... There's a motion that was made on our last meeting, and that motion is basically in place, that the site is to be stabilized. Understanding that there's still areas to be worked upon, I think that needs to be completed. I mean, that's what we agreed upon, and that's what was requested, and that hasn't been achieved yet. That needs to be done. And if we want to request that a stormwater, a new stormwater plan be generated and brought before this board by the...
And Concom, right?
Well, it has to go to Concom.
And before this board, by its next hearing. I mean, those would be two actions that could be in place. So, basically, complete what was to have been completed and then provide, you know, the appropriate plan that can address the new issues that have been created that aren't in compliance with our current plan.
When you guys are out there today, did you find any... Did you... Or can you identify any specific items that can be easily identified that you can determine when they've been achieved, so that the expectation that the town has is the same that the applicant has, that we know when the expectation has been met? Is that even possible?
Well, I mean, we have an engineer that's our consultant. We have conservation with insight, so we have individuals that are in place that can say, yes, this has been achieved. And to date, that has not been the case. And so, it's not up to, you know, us learning about... We can learn and appreciate the complexity of this situation, but our consultants in staff and how staff can guide us as to what is achieved and what is not achieved. And to date, those individuals have indicated it has not been achieved.
And Doug gave out, did give us some specific... I just don't know how we can measure success here, because I don't see any success at all.
I think a lot of those are subjective, to be honest with you. I'm out there every day. I understand the stabilization, and that's an ongoing thing. That's gonna be telling you, because you have open soil. And I think Jeff, you know, Jeff works in the oil business. He understands construction. That's gonna be an ongoing thing. We're gonna be battling that till the end. We're working daily, we have a daily checklist. The other things are cutting up the driveway, where we had to cut the infiltration system in. I mean, that's subjective to find me on that, I think. I mean, not fair.
A driveway that was not supposed to be cut in the first place.
You were told not to do that.
We talked to the... We have an email with the town engineer that agreed what we needed to do. So, we have someone from the town saying...
Was that, was that after the fact?
That was not after the fact, that was before the fact, and it, it's when we realized that the pipe was designed in error, and that, that it had to be lowered by three feet, and this has to take a forty-foot extension, and again, it's the design error that
That you don't, that you don't, that, that you don't own, I understand, and I know that this is putting you in a very
And when you have a pipe forty feet by Scotland Road, you take an excavator, it's gonna, it tore up by the road, so there was no choice but to re-grade it, if we left it and just hay-hated left it there, it would create a mess, now, what he did is he created the swell, all the water, we had over an inch of rain two Sundays ago, went into the swell that he created, so he corrected what he needed to do in order to do that, now you're telling me you're fining me for him cleaning up this mess, it doesn't make any sense. And I know you, we need to work together, I figured you wanna work with me instead of, you know, fining me twenty-seven thousand dollars a month, I mean, you know
Eric, Eric.
It's a little ridiculous.
I think you need to understand, that these bo- the, the two boards here do not want to fine you, we wanted this project done last year. It was to be buttoned up last year, and here we are a year later, and we're still trying to stabilize the site, and have the site stabilized for the winter, and it's not. And, and, and that's, it, it's quite simple, it's not, and I, I, I didn't create this, Damon didn't create this, none of the board members here created this situation. We're dealing with the situation.
I understand that, but then you bring it off, and I'm not saying that
And, and the only, the, and the only, and I don't wanna, I, I don't wanna argue, the only way to correct it is for you and your contractor to correct it. And I have no control over that, and if, if your guy can't do it, or he's off doing something else, it, it's, it's not a purview.
I'm just not agreeing with what you're filing for, because it doesn't make any sense to me, if you have to cut in infiltration, which you gave us permission to do, put in an infiltration system, in order to bring machines down, you gotta create a road, so I don't, and now you're telling me we're cutting in a short game
No, no, let's, let's, let, again, again, Eric, I, I don't wanna, I do not want to argue. Your, your consultant that is to your left has told you that there's still lots of work on the site to make it stable, and it hasn't been stabilized, and that's, again, I try, I try again, I tried to take the front piece out of the equation, the rest of the site is not stabilized, and it's creating issues, and it's like we have this unstable, we have this unstable, then we have a new site unstable, and every time something is done, it creates a new domino.
So, uh, what I'm hearing is that you, you, there's still work to be done, your engineer is saying that it's about seventy, almost seventy-five percent unstable. Um But, and then, okay, so, so limit, limit, let me finish, so he, he's saying you have about seventy-five percent of the work done?
No, no, no. It's, it's between fifty and seventy.
Okay, so you got
That was the conversation.
A little better than fifty percent of the, of the stabil- site stabilization complete, you have no dev- no developer, nobody's working with you on this project. You have no stormwater that is acceptable to the town, no stormwater plant that is acceptable to the town.
Correct, but what he said, we're gonna get your notice, but we do have one that's in place, but the one he's gonna present is gonna create less, we need less stormwater because of the
So, doesn't matter, you need less, more, not enough, whatever, you, what the town has does not have, does not have what the town needs, so I think wh- what would you like us to do?
Well, I've laid out what we need to do.
I'm gonna do a timeout for a second.
It's so frustrating.
I'm gonna ask our consultant to give us direction on what we should do with this feeding at this point in time.
Thank you. I think that what would be helpful for starters is some clarity, and, and I can say this as maybe somewhat, someone who is somewhat removed, I, I haven't been assisting either board with this, I was involved in this project over a year ago, uh, my colleague Brian Winter has been at these past meetings and has been assisting the board, so I came back into the mix when Brian was unable to attend tonight, about a week and a half ago, um, and I reviewed some of this new documentation that I hadn't seen before. And what I thought when I first read it versus what I understood through follow-up conversations with Brian and with Martha, and now having, have been at this meeting for the past hour and, and heard the presentations that were, were made, I think it would be helpful to know what the board's intent was and is with respect to the term stabilization. Because you made a motion, and you voted a motion back on December seventeenth, that required stabilization of the site, and when I first read that, not knowing what had occurred at the meeting, not knowing what it meant in context, it meant stop everything, stabilize the site so we don't have issues with stormwater off-site, neighboring properties, neighboring public ways, stabilize, it doesn't mean continue building a stormwater management system so every aspect of the system is complete, it means stop the bleeding, so to speak.
That was my understanding.
Okay, what I understood subsequently occurred, and maybe I'm incorrect here, I'm sure the applicant will correct me or the boards will correct me, is that what then occurred was continued construction of the stormwater management system, and in some ways, in many ways, that system was constructed contrary to the plans, maybe because the plans couldn't physically be built, because what they found on the ground site conditions were, were different than what they had anticipated when they designed the system. So I think what the board is now saying, what the boards are now saying is, well, we need, and you obviously do, a revised stormwater management plan that acknowledges existing conditions different from what were thought to be existing conditions, and designs a plan different from what was originally approved by Concom, by these boards, that will address stormwater, that's gonna take time. It's gonna take time through the permitting process, it's gonna take time, as we just heard from the applicant's consulting engineer, to prepare that new plan, particularly where he's new to the project and is gonna have to sort of start at square one to some extent. Is that what you're willing to wait for, and what are you allowing to occur in the interim? Do you need some temporary, short-term, immediate stabilization, and what does that look like? I think it's fair to answer that question, not only for your own benefit and getting what you want, because you've made a comment several times earlier in the meeting tonight about, well, you know, wha- what's the benchmark here, what are we expecting, how do we determine compliance? It's also fair to the applicant, because if you're sending the applicant on down a path that's gonna take four, six, eight, ten weeks to complete a permitting process, design, and so forth, and meanwhile, you're fining him day by day because he's not in compliance, but he can't bring himself into compliance, that's not fair necessarily either. So I think it's fair to say, what do you expect immediately, and we've set out deadlines for what we expected immediately in terms of stabilization, if you interpret it the way that I first did, that meant button everything out quickly. And then, if you wanna set a deadline for a further design or redesign of the stormwater system, that makes sense too. But if there's a six, eight, or ten-week gap between those two things, and the winter doesn't continue to be as mild as it's been, or maybe if it does, and we get as much rain as we're anticipating to get, that could be a real problem. So I think you have to answer both questions, what do you want now, and how does the applicant give you that? And then what do you expect in the longer term in terms of a fully redesigned system, because you do need that, you need a project that, you know, ki- can, can be issued an occupancy permit based upon full compliance with the plans of record as approved by all applicable boards.
That makes a point.
That's perfectly stated, it's kind of where I was, but you really laid it out perfectly. We've got a couple of different issues here, even when grass freezes, especially if there's snow or even frozen, it provides the ability to mitigate flow. So your next plan that is the final stormwater plan for this site is gonna take into the fact that sediments are stable, and you're going to be mitigating relatively clean water. But you don't have that now, it's almost like a whole different, and you basically said that around the vine a little bit, but when you spoke and you said it very clearly, we need a stabilization of what, I mean, a stipulative definition of what we mean to stabilize the site, can a little water come out? I mean, is it gonna be like no water in the world, I mean, that, I get down Scotland, I get down the Scotland Heights, there's water coming down the road. So what we've gotta do is try to get someone, and I guess it comes from your side, to give us something that's gonna show us the stipulative definition, Peter, of what the planning board thinks, or Doug thinks is appropriate for water to come out of the site, and do something until the site is done, what can we do, is it more hay bales, is it more this, do we have to make another pond? Because most of the water seems to be coming down now, how do we s- stage it so that it's not all down the bottom at once? Because you don't even have your storm scepters hooked up, right? So I mean, that's a question which you, I think, said, I don't think I'm putting words in your mouth, but as his engineer, you gotta tell us how he can do that for the next six months anyway, till the place starts to grow.
To speak directly to your question, I think we have, they've made cuts in the short game area, which have not been sufficiently stabilized. They've made cuts in the driveway, which Doug says are not sufficiently stabilized, and they have not finished the site stabilization overall, somewhere between fifty and seventy percent, so I'd say addressing the first two issues is the priority, because we feel that they should not have been cut in in the way that they were. And then finishing the site stabilization, as required at our December seventeenth meeting. And that stabilization is in compliance, you know, it says in the standards that we're looking for in the motion. I think we asked them to come to those standards, we go out and look at it, if they're at the standards, great, then they can ask to do other work. Till they're at the standards, they can.
But what he said earlier too was a little bit
More guidance.
What are those standards? What are we asking for? No, no sediments on the road, what are we asking?
Yeah, we're asking for soil containment, not water containment.
Alright, that's, that's better. Did, if I can maybe say something, didn't they decide in December, didn't Doug say that he wanted three to six inches of bark mulch or on anything that wasn't planted?
Yep.
Because
I mean, what the town does not wanna do is prescribe how this should be done to the applicant, the applicant has an engineer who's who's fully qualified to say how things can be stabilized, we just wanna see that it's done properly on-site, so, you know, we do, the town isn't gonna try to tell the applicant what to do, just tell the end result, soils can't be leaving the site.
Could I say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I think in reflecting on this, uh, what might be the most useful, um, and something that would take a lot less time than a revised stormwater, uh, planning calculations would be a erosion and sediment control plan that, that takes into account what is out there and what additional things may need to be out there, so it's kind of on paper, right now it's, right now it's in, it's in my weekly reports, or it's in emails, or whatever it is, but it's not necessarily on a plan that's kind of updated, right, it may have been, they, an erosion control plan was prepared in the past, but it's, that, that is understood to, uh, change throughout a project anyway, in any construction project, erosion control shifts as you, but we don't have a timestamped, like, hey, this is kind of what's happening now, and a couple other recommendations, like I do, like I do have, um, get, those will be included on there, but also kind of show the controls that are there. We did this once, I do think, remember, it was like a eleven-by-seventeen plan, but it was more focused for down in this area. Yeah, so I'm thinking maybe this is something where we look, and we, and we try to do it on a larger scale, and just to show kind of kind of where we're at, so we can, can see it on paper, I guess, because it's, it's all kind of, it's tou- it's tough to and so that, you know, that, that will take time, but not nearly, like I said, as much as
How much time would you expect, given your workload currently?
I mean, I'd, I'd like to say I could, if I could, if I could try to get an engineer, uh, off of other projects, I mean, end of next week at best.
So what if we gave you
At, at best, I'd say.
So end of next week, it's Wednesday night, so by Friday, you think, by the weekend, next weekend?
Next Friday, and I think what I'd like to do is get something, um, kind of in like a I wouldn't say draft, but kind of like a review, so I could maybe get input from Doug and Joe, they've been intimately involved.
Yeah, if we set up a meeting for the Monday following that weekend, or Tuesday, uh, with Pete, myself, Doug, Joe, Martha.
It would be the Tuesday, it's a holiday.
Should work. Um, Monday's a holiday, that Monday, um, so maybe on that Tuesday, essentially almost two weeks from now, either that Tuesday or Wednesday, set up a meeting to review it and a, and approve a, a plan so that you guys can essentially proceed with the stabilization in a way that everyone is comfortable with. Does that seem reasonable to you, as far as the timeline, I don't wanna be, uh, forcing things on you?
No, tha- that's reasonable, I can, I can get it, I can get something to a point that at least can be discussed at a meeting, and then after that, perhaps there might be some modifications made as a result of the meeting, but, um, that's, that's reasonable, that, that eight, that you're looking at the eighteenth, nineteenth.
And Damon?
Mm-hmm.
If Mr. Miller suddenly appears and starts running all around again, you guys ought to run it through Peter and Eric, what's, and Doug, what's going on, so.
I, I can tell you all the things that we need to do, I mean, three things that we need to do.
Well, no, really set it up through him and get it right on the paper now, so.
But we'll, we'll put it, we'll put it together, we'll, we'll put it, we'll put it together.
Yeah.
Yep.
And work it through those guys, but if he shows up like three days from now, let the guys know what's going on.
So we would anticipate a revised schedule?
Yes. Meeting with them, and we'll give you a revised schedule. Yes.
That would be good.
Can you read, Damon, can you read into the record what you're going to find me?
It's actually, it's not, we're not finding you.
The town.
It's, 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 that's, that's, that's another board, that's not, that's not us.
So, as the applicant, I know, I mean, you're saying number three, six, five, so I'd like to know what you're, what is the fine, why I'm being fined? So we can be read in the record.
Eric, Eric, what I'm gonna say is, this board does not fine, okay, there's a, there's an enforcement entity that does that, and the enforcement entity will do what it's supposed to do.
Okay, but you're leaving me in the dark here.
Oh, you're not in the dark, not in the dark, you, you know, the town's, the town's attorney wrote your attorney a letter, it was, it was quite, quite simple, laid out in that letter. Your attorney did, your, your, your attorney didn't respond to the letter, you responded to the letter.
With his input?
Wha- however, and so now it's a matter of, okay, you said, he said, and so that's but the town's attorney notified you that this was going to happen, if, if correction wasn't taking place, and this is a lot of time.
Yes, okay.
And so that's where it's at. It's, it's
I have the opinion, if I don't agree, I can appeal it.
Absolutely, 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 but it's, it's not, it's not the role of this board to be involved in that process, we're just trying to get this, this this across the finish line.
I think so, trying to get there.
Peter, Martha, I, I've heard through this a little bit too, that when you guys went out there, some of the things that Eric was trying to do were really done really correctly, like staking the hay bales and stuff? Or maybe I just heard that and it wasn't that, I mean, is there stuff that he can, I mean, if we got rain coming and everything's like this weekend and next, is there stuff he can be doing that's or was it all done okay, I just heard maybe stuff wasn't staked, or, or silk fence wasn't in good shape or something, but if, if it's okay, that's fine too.
There are hay bales down at the end of the driveway now, several rows of them, they appear not to be staked, if they are, then that's good, but they do not
I mean, everything that
The, the area, the, the roadway and the cut that was made into the short game area is, is still exposed, totally exposed. Eric, that, that hasn't been addressed.
Should that have hay bales or something, what should happen?
Well, there's been, Eric has spread a lot of hay, I don't know whether that would be the way to do it, or
You're saying it might be good if these guys tie up stuff they can do by hand before more rain comes and that breaks the deal.
You know, there's, there's three-foot cut, you know, to the hillside, right, there's an exposed road that's gonna create issues, and there's an open pit, so things are gonna flow into the open pit.
And it's like, runoff coming down there is part of what impacted the pit there. So that, that all needs to be addressed, and we talked about the side, from the, the west side of the driveway, where some controls have been put in, but appear to be inadequate, so there are a lot of areas that can be addressed, from what we observed this morning.
So he needs like to mulch it, to make it stay there, or hay it, or do something to keep it so from the sand, from dirt, from coming off the side.
I mean, the area in the short game area, the, the soils in the short game area aren't, um, ex- aren't, it's, they're contained by the nature of how that cut is made, and they're working their way down toward that toward that cut, so they're not going anywhere. And they're working their way down toward that, toward that cut, so they're not going anywhere. So any of this, any of this bare soil you're speaking of in the short game area, it's, it's not going anywhere. You're correct, that's some, that's a, well, no, it can't, it can't go anywhere. I mean, it's, it's flowing down to a, a big giant pit, it can't flow off the site, it's flowing into the infiltration.
It can't go break through there and go across the street into the resource area?
No, I mean, it's flowing, and it's flowing into the infiltration system there. It's coming down and into this, into this. Some of it is working its way through this pipe, like I said, that, that we're going to be correcting that. But any of this is, is coming down into, into here, which is covered with fabric. Again, that infiltration system isn't complete yet, so it's still, it's serving as like a sedimentation area. But it's, the system's covered with fabric, so no, so the sediment's not getting into the system because it's covered with fabric. But it's a low, it's a low spot. So any, any of this, and, and whatever is not flowing into that is hated. He's got hay all along areas that aren't, that aren't flowing down here.
Alright, so it's not getting up to Scotland Road?
No, no, not there, no, no. And that, I mean, the, I mean, the, again, the fines are up to you, but, but this, I mean, the, I would, by no means classify this as cutting the short game area. He was part of what we were instructed to do is install the drainage system. And in order to do that, that work, that the access needed to be created, that, I mean, you can't quite see from there. But there's, there's a ten foot slope coming up here, a ten, a...
Twelve?
Twelve plus foot slope here, I mean, it's, the, the nature of the site is such that just access needed to be created here. So that, I mean, that's, there's no other way to build, to, to build that. This is a four to eight feet of fill material placed down in here. So I'd actually say the, it was consolidated. He, he didn't go out and kind of go, go wild out there, it was consolidated into, you know, kind of as tight an area as he, as he could to get a machine to access that. So, and again, the, whatever disturbed soil is, on the slope is, 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 is hated. You've got a thick hay mulch and then any of this, the, the road is just flowing into this, what's acting as a temporary settling area. Until such time that it, this system can be completed. And then the idea is that this would be backfilled and hated. And we're, we're working on getting there.
But that's, is that part of stabilizing, stabilizing the site or is that part of putting in?
Well, the reason the drainage, the reason the drainage is important is that this is what we will be demonstrating, I think, on a plan so that everyone can kind of see, kind of, this might go along with a bit of a sequence, but this system is, 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 we're going to be bringing this online before too long. And that means essentially sending water to it, which means activating these catch basins. There's two catch basins here that bring water into the system. Those are not functioning now, so the intent is that that serves to mitigate runoff going down this driveway. So that's, that's why this was an integral part of stabilization. And so that's, that's why it was discussed and we, we understood it to mean that if you can, if you stopped all construction and then you'd be really missing out on a necessary part of stabilization, which is a drainage system, which is why that was, that was conducted.
Can you bring those on site before you stabilize sediment, catch basins?
If done carefully, yes, and I've talked to Doug about it.
So meaning you'd have to clean them with silt?
Yeah, I think the way I would see that is you would have a silt, you put a silt sack in the actual catch basin. It's like a, a filter of sorts that water has to flow through and it would catch anything. And then we'd have some check dams, hay bales ahead of that, you know, we're talking about extra measures. And then now if we're talking about this isolator row with the clean out pipe kind of thing that we've discussed, this is all kind of tying into this, into it. So that, and that's, that's kind of why it is critical as this, it's just a, a phasing thing that as we move forward, we're going to need to bring these online, because if we don't, then, you know, the water will continue to flow down the hill as we, as we attempt to button everything up.
Can the catch basins be deep silted if you fill them up with dirt? Do they have the ability to be cleaned a lot of time?
Yeah, so the, yeah, and well, that's the other benefit on the catch basins is they have four feet of storage under the outlet pipe, and then there's like a hood on the pipe. So it, it prevents anything from flowing straight into the pipe. And then it has a, a sump to hold sediment and debris, yeah. But really, you shouldn't get much in it because you're going to have, you're actually going to have silt sack actually preventing the silt from even, even getting in there. So that's something we are working toward and part of why I'm pushing to get this system finished. And so that we can endeavor to bring that online. And again, that's something I've been talking to Doug about.
Okay, so just to try to get us to where we need to be for our, to conclude, we're going to try to get an erosion and sediment control plan, at your suggestion. And is two weeks enough time for that to be put into?
Yes, let's, let's go for it.
We're going to have a revised schedule, a real schedule that we can hold in a piece in our hand, okay? And we're going to continue with stabilization of the remaining rear aspect of the site. Because that, that's achievable, right? So those will be our three objectives. Erosion and sediment control plan in two weeks. Revised schedule. You ready? Four days. I feel like I'm a teacher and, you know, giving you a homework assignment, four days. So today's...
By the by the weekend.
By Friday, no, no, you want it by Monday. You want it on Monday. That gives you plenty of time, okay? And we're going to have, we're going to continue with the rear aspect of the remainder of the site that needs to be helped along with stabilization that we've agreed upon.
This kind of a landing area you're talking about?
All, all back there.
And I think the driveway also needs to be stabilized so that water's not running off the site there.
Because now, now we have a driveway that has compacted material, which has dust and everything else, right? That's just going to...
Let me just talk to everybody about the end of the driveway, what he did. I think a lot of people run out, so last sixty to eighty feet, he didn't roll. He dug it down a foot, he pitched it towards the swell, he put crushed down there. So essentially, you put a basin down below. So the water infiltrates the last sixty feet and then goes towards that swell, which is on the approved plan. So that's something you don't see along with the three day go. But, you know, we've had a different amount of rain since that. We had over an inch or four hours on a two Sunday ago. There at sunrise with Joe, and you can joke that it held up well. So obviously, we're still creating measures, but that, just, you know, that is in place. And that was Miller's idea to, to do that and where the water would come down from.
I think we've been very fortunate that we haven't had a significant storm.
We've had three storms since the last meeting and all the water runoff site's been clear, so something's working.
I think.
Should we read nine?
Go right ahead.
We have a letter of correspondence from Dale. I will read into the record. "I'm a resident of Scotland Heights Drive and have been paying close attention to the development of the Newbury Golf Center and its endless delays. Granted, some of the issues surrounding this project go back to the beginning and the issuance of a special permit, especially the cutting down of the excess trees on the edges of the property. The developer has accepted the responsibility, has accepted the responsibility of one of his subcontractors who went way beyond his boundaries of cutting down trees. But what has transpired since has been one obstacle after another presented by the selectmen, the planning board, conservation commission, and the contracted town engineer. Every minute aspect of the project has been criticized, postponed, and micromanaged by the selectmen in particular. Meanwhile, an abutting property, 113 Scotland Road, the Moscow..."
Askowitz.
"Askowitz property has a house and garage which has been deteriorating steadily over the past twenty years. The garage has now collapsed, the house has holes in the roof and outside walls, and the front porch is collapsing. It is a danger to the public, especially children, if they ever attempt to explore the building site. I brought this attention to the, brought this to the attention of the town building inspector, Sam Jocelyn, on several occasions over the past several years, and actions have been taken. It's a disgrace to the town of Newbury to have such a site on one of the main entrances to our town. Meanwhile, the developer of the golf center has to endure countless project delays, postponements, and fines. This project, if allowed to be completed, will be a beautiful addition to our town and provide countless hours of enjoyment to our residents and surrounding communities. Just doesn't seem fair to me to allow an abutting property to decay in front of our eyes while continuous obstacles have been placed on the golf center development. Please find attached recent photos of property 131 Scotland Road. Thank you, Dave Williams, 12 Scotland Heights, Newbury, Mass."
Do we have, Martha, do you know if we have anything on dilapidated properties, any bylaws or anything?
Actually, don't remember.
Dale, I take objection to your characterization. We've asked for reasonable things that Eric has not complied with. I asked him in the beginning of this season to plant the grass on the back where he graded it. He waited until the fall. It was his choice, we've not micromanaged, we've tried to help him along. He's responsible for the site, he's responsible for the fact that it's not stable. He should have stabilized it when we asked him to, we wouldn't be having these problems. The buck stops with him. We would love for him to have been done last year when he said it would be done. So I understand how it looks, he's the one doing the work, not us. I want more people out there, I want the work done.
Can I address that?
So I'm, I'm just going to hold on for a second. So at this point in time, I'm going to open up for public comments. If you'd like to make a comment, I'm going to ask that you come up to the microphone, identify yourself, state your name and address. And if you're an abutter, please identify as such and we'll continue with now public comments.
Now, come on up.
I, Dale Williams, 12 Scotland Heights. I do have a lot to say, but I'll keep it brief because I know all those people are waiting. First of all, your accusation about not planting grass, when it doesn't rain in August, you don't plant grass. Eric told you that? And somehow, with all due respect, Damon, you're not an expert on growing grass in August with no rain.
He's got a well on site, so...
Can I, can I, I'm not, I'm not going to fight, I'm addressing what he accused me of saying.
Okay, what I'm going to do at this point in time is I, we have information written to the record. If you want to supply something additional to the information, please do. What I don't want to, don't want to get into, he said, she said, I don't, we're, we're not going to do that. If you'd like to have some supplemental information or comments, please feel free.
Sure, first of all, I'd like to thank the attorney. He's the smartest guy in the room. And he kind of was reflexive of what Jeff started to talk about earlier. We have a moving target for this project that has stopped and start and stopped and start. We have a term called stabilization that nobody in this room can define. That was his first comment, that when he first read the piece, I don't know what this means. I don't believe Damon does, I don't believe Alicia does, I don't believe Eric does.
Well, I do, I believe, I...
Please, 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 just, please.
It's a very nebulous thing. And when you're in the middle of a project, when more underground ledge was found, the term stabilization, he's trying to address that, but when he tries to address it, oh, he cut into the front area. And that's why I appreciate what Jeff and the attorney said. Doug Packer's not even here, he seems to be the smartest guy in the room about stormwater and concom. But we're asking the selectmen and the planning board to be experts on land development. We don't believe any of you are, neither am I. His engineer is, but in my opinion, they need to be given more flexibility to get this site under control so that when the season comes in the spring, when grass will grow, they'll have a better understanding of what needs to be done. I think the guy needs to be given more leeway to complete his work. And my point about the Moskowitz property, it's such a shame, it's sitting there. And we don't even care about it, but we care about this new beautiful golf course that he's going to have to jump through hoops to complete. And now the town planner doesn't even know if we have a dilapidated building by law. It just blows my mind. So I want to thank the attorney for his comments and Jeff to, to begin that discussion. This is a moving target that I don't think he can ever be successful if every time he comes in here every month, things are continually postponed or second guessed by people who are really not professionals in, in the area. So that's my comment, thank you.
Thank you, Doc. Would anyone else like to address? I think at this point in time, I don't know if we want to entertain any new motions or conditions. Planning board? George or Mary, do you have any comments or indications for a motion or a new condition?
All right now, this is George. This hearing's gone on for about an hour and forty-five minutes. I'm trying to figure out what we have accomplished. I really don't know. So I think conspicuous by his absence is John, the manager of the project. I haven't seen him at any meeting ever, except one perhaps. But he's the guy who wanted to be talking with us about what can be done, what can be corrected that has already been done incorrectly. His problem material and equipment on site, and who's going to supervise it? Those are the things I've been thinking about.
Very, very good comments, George, thank you. Mary, did you want to pipe in with anything?
No, I just, I, I'm going to get back to my original point, I don't understand why this hasn't happened. And I just don't get it, I, I've been listening and for lots of different reasons. But, I mean, it's been a long time and it seems to me it just needs to get done somehow. Somebody needs to get aggressive about it, come up with a plan and get it done. I don't, I'm just having a hard time figuring out why we keep going back on this.
So does it seem as if...
Thank you, Mary.
My board have any comments?
Does it seem as if it's been insinuated that the, these boards have been holding this project up? Because that hasn't been the case. The developer has had the special permit since twenty-seven, seventeen, did he get it? And he's had every opportunity to get, to get the work done. I understand that the weather has been an issue, but it, it's not like the, this board is, has put up an obstacle and said, you can't, don't cross this here line. He's just been told to, to follow the law, don't allow silt to come out of the, um, right? Don't go into the, I mean, just follow the, the law. So, I mean, it's, and I believe that for what I heard Mr. Williams say was that he wanted this, these boards to ignore the law and just let the developer do whatever he wanted and cut wherever he wanted and, and throw everything to the wind. Because somebody has to be held accountable and, and I just take, um, insulted that that's the, you think that this board, that these boards should look the other, other way. And does it matter if, if runoff goes into the neighbor's yards and, and silt goes into the neighbor's pool? And, and, you know, that's all.
Right.
So I think we're determining next steps.
So we have three, three items that we've kind of talked about, and I think we got them. And we have timelines, so please, 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 it'll be helpful. So I think we need to figure out when we're going to next pick this up. Martha, do you have any suggestions as far as our schedule?
Let's see, if there's going to be a meeting on the eighteenth or nineteenth. We've got erosion control plan. And the next two, I know Brian will not be here the week of the seventeenth. We hope to continue until the twenty-fifth, selectmen's meeting, that might be a possibility.
I have a consult. Not the twenty-first, okay.
Is that enough time for him to do what he needs to get done?
Well, if the, but the seventeenth is before the, we would talk about the erosion control meeting.
We're talking about erosion control on the end of the nineteenth.
I don't think we should meet before then. That doesn't make any sense to me.
No, I was suggesting the nineteenth, but that would be difficult to talk about.
Um, but I would think, um, I can't imagine a meeting before we've discussed that draft.
How about your first meeting in March?
Four.
Should I have another public hearings?
I'm trying.
Nothing at the fourth? Okay. So, then I would entertain a motion for the planning board to continue this public hearing to the fourth of, of March.
I'll move, we continue it to the fourth of March, the seven fifteen.
Second.
All right.
Voting members of George.
Okay, so, George, if you're, are you still there, George?
I'm still, but I'm checking out shortly.
Thank you very much. I just need for you to vote on the motion to continue this for the, to the fourth of March.
Yes.
Okay.
Seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen. Time specific, yes. Larry?
Yes.
Okay. Who else, Mary?
Yeah.
That's it? Okay, I vote yes, thank you.
All right, I'd entertain a motion from my board.
I move that, I move that we postpone the public hearing.
Continue.
Continue the public hearing till, um, March fourth at seven fifteen.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And then I entertain a motion from my board to close the meeting.
Go, John.
Yes.
Thank you. I think Mike, Mike, did you make the motion to close?
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna just take two minutes to reshuffle our chairs, and then we will pick up with our, um, site plan review for the Newbury self-storage and special permit as well. Thank you. George, thank you very much. I understand if you have to jump off. Mary, you're still there?
I'm right here.
Okay, thanks. We're just taking a, a two-minute reshuffling.
No, no, no problem. No problem.
That's for you.
Hey, good to meet you, Dave.
Wanna saw the slide down?
Yeah, please do.
Go in this direction.
You doing okay?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I have muted your mics until we get going again.
Okay. So, George has checked in?
George has checked in. Mary's here. We're gonna continue, we're gonna have two concurrent public hearings at this point in time. One is going to be a site plan review application for the expansion of Newbury Self-Storage, 131 Newbury Port Turnpike Map R36, Parcels 23 and 24. Owner applicant Stoway Storage, Newbury LLC, doing business as Newbury Self-Storage, William D. Francesco, manager. And we're going to have a special permit application for the expansion of Newbury Self-Storage, 131 Turnpike Map 36, R36, Parcels 23 and 24. Owner applicant Stoway Storage, Newbury LLC, doing business as Newbury Self-Storage, William D. Francesco, manager. Now, Martha, just for clarification, for the special permit application, we're gonna have Woody participating in the voting process since George is currently off the call?
Um, yeah, so then Woody would be going, you can authorize that or ask him to, to do that as a chair. It's a supermajority, so Woody then would then be participating through, throughout the entire process.
Throughout the process, okay.
So the five voting members would be the four of you plus Mary.
Okay, and that would be for the special permit application, and then the site plan review application, should we handle that first? Or do we just go, go cruise, cruise through both?
And it'll be both, I think the votes will have to be taken separately.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
And so that would be the four, it would be the three of you plus Mary, because it's only three.
Okay. Okay, so Mary, don't go anywhere. You're still there, right?
Not going anywhere. I'm right here.
I love it. Thank you very much. Okay, the floor is yours, sir.
Okay, good evening again.
Hello.
Oh, I'm sorry. Public, thank you very much, Mary.
Legal notice, Town of Newbury Planning Board, public hearing notice, site plan review. Residents of the Town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Wednesday, February fifth, 2020, at seven forty-five PM, in the second floor hearing room at the Newbury Municipal Offices, 12 Kentway, Byfield, Mass. 2001922, the Newbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing to consider a site plan review application for the expansion of the self-storage facility known as Newbury Self-Storage at 131 Newbury Port Turnpike Map R36, Parcels 23 and 24, as shown on the drawings entitled. Proposed site plan for 131 Newbury Port Turnpike in Newbury, Mass., dated December nine, 2019, revised January eighth, 2020, and described in supporting documents, all as prepared by Millennium Engineering Incorporated for Stoway Storage, Newbury LLC, DBA, Newbury Self-Storage, William D. Francisco, manager. The application is on file for review during regular business hours with the clerk, town clerk, and in the planning office, 12 Kentway, Byfield, Mass. For more information, contact the planning board office at nine seven eight four six five oh eight six two, extension three one two. All persons interested or wishing to be heard relative to the proposed project should appear at the time and place designated above. Peter Pagos, Chair, Newbury Planning Board.
Thank you very much.
Your publication dates were January twenty-first and twenty-eighth.
Thank you, Martha.
And then we have the other one.
Which is going to be?
Legal notice, Town of Newbury Planning Board, public hearing notice, special permit. Residents of the Town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Wednesday, February fifth, 2020, at seven forty-five PM, in the second floor hearing room at the Newbury Municipal Offices, 12 Kentway, Byfield, Mass. 01922, the Newbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing to consider a special permit application for mini, mini storage warehouses for the expansion of self-storage facility known as Newbury Self-Storage at 131 Newbury Port Turnpike, Map R36, Parcels 23 and 24, as shown on the drawings entitled, proposed site plan for 131 Newbury Port Turnpike in Newbury, Mass., dated December nine, 2019, revised on January eighth, 2020, and described in supporting documents, all as prepared by Millennium Engineering Incorporated for Stoway Storage, Newbury LLC, DBA, Newbury Self-Storage, William D. Francisco, manager. The application is on file for review during regular business hours with the town clerk and in the planning office, 12 Kentway, Byfield, Mass. For more information, contact the planning office at nine seven eight four six five zero eight six two, extension three one two. All persons interested or wishing to be heard relative to the proposed project should appear at the time and place designated above. Pete, Peter Pagos, Chair, Newbury Planning Board, published Newbury Port Daily News, January twenty-first and January twenty-eighth, 2020.
Thank you. Chris, you now have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Chris, you work with Millennium Engineering, and Bill D. Francisco is here with me as well. We are here for the expansion of Newbury Self-Storage at 131 Newbury Port Turnpike. We're gonna go through the plans, I guess, one by one, be the best way to do it. This is just a cover sheet showing a general overview of the four new buildings we're proposing. It shows the last building that's out there now, which is this building. We're located in the Business Light Industrial District. There's four waivers, I guess I can go through those as time goes on. Interesting conditions we show. Interesting site, there's eight buildings out there now. He's got a small area out back of gravel that he uses for storage of vehicles, and there was a stockpile area as well. Rest of the site is all undeveloped woodland. It's about fifty-four acres, plus or minus. Most of it is almost all wetland over here. We didn't bother flagging this area. We flagged an area along the southerly side of the property. The rest of it's upland with some ledge on site, some outcrops of ledge. We'll get into the design plans. We mentioned we got four new buildings going in. They're forty by three hundred and seventy feet, fourteen thousand eight hundred square feet, uh, square footage. Be the same kind of designers out there now, they're gonna look the same as these. One big difference, we're gonna have just, instead of a pitched rooftop, we're gonna have it flowing in all one direction to the west. It'll help with the, you know, the, the sun, the, the sun right now doesn't shine on part of these buildings, so we get some freezing snow that stays out there, so the intent is to pitch it all to the west. There'll be roof drains along the foundation of each building. Those will be tied into the drainage system on site. We'll have a series of catch basins that eventually will tie into the constructed wetland that's located there on the northerly edge of the property. And one of the big differences on this phase of the project is instead of having one continuous slope across and one finished floor that's the same as we did out before, we're sloping it every, every fifty feet or so, we're gonna slope it about six inch drop. So basically, this, this side of the building is gonna be about a foot or two higher than this side of the building. That way, we can eliminate the amount of catch basins we have to put on site. So basically, starting the catch basins about halfway's into the building. Everything will flow from south to north to these catch basins. Grading plan just shows a little more detail of the grading itself. We got number of catch basins that we label. We're using twelve-inch HDP pipe connecting to each of the catch basins, tying to this sediment for bay, and then that discharges into the constructed wetland. That size to handle a hundred-year storm. There's no additional runoff flowing into the wetland that's currently going there now. We will have a number of walls along the south and north side of the, of the parking area, especially along the, where the, where the pond is gonna be. You know, walls ranging in height from four feet up to, I don't know, in this corner is one that's about nine feet. We're trying to minimize what we can, the amount of walls, so we, in some spots, we get three-to-one grading tying in. When we get closer to the wetland, we have a number of walls, so we have to unfortunately use, we don't have enough room to tie in the grading before we get to the wetlands. This plan just shows beyond the last, beyond the last building and parking area, there's a area that we've cleared for temporary stockpile area, ultimately for gravel area that we use for Bill to sell or for Bill to rent out for any RVs or any boats that wanna park there for the winter. This is just a couple of detailed sheets. So on the pond, we've got some plantings inside the pond. We got a lighting plan, we're matching what's out there now, basically just using wall mounts along the faces of the buildings. They're about ten to twelve feet high. We get, you know, we get zero discharge of light once we get into the wetland, so there's no, no neighbors will be, have any issues with the lights. The last plan was we did for the fire department, just showing that the Newbury Fire Truck can make all the turning movements coming into the site, down all the alleyways, coming back out. That's a quick overview of the site. Sorry, I'm losing my voice a little bit. We can take any questions, if you have any. Bill did, and Bill did a study that, you know, he's been told that he can do, you know.
I had the original feasibility study updated about two months ago. It says I can build substantially more than that. Oh, sorry. I had a feasibility study updated a couple of months ago.
I am. Francesco.
Pardon me? Oh, I'm Bill D. Francisco. Thank you. The feasibility study was updated, said I could build quite a few more than what we're actually doing. What we're actually doing is we're taking these buildings right here, and we're, we're butting them up together with an eight-inch firewall in between it. Initially, we had the building separated, separated, and, and I sat down with the chief of the fire department, and he said, there's just so many turns in here, is there any way you can make it better? So we decided to butt the buildings up together so that it has the alleyways around the ends of the buildings to get around, instead of having eight separate buildings. The other thing we're doing is the roofs are gonna have additional load for solar and for, um, uh, snow load.
Oh, you're gonna put solar on these?
At some point, I'd like to, yeah.
Okay, cool. It's the easel that doesn't wanna cooperate.
We got it.
Anything else you wanna fill us in on?
It's pretty much more of the same, to be honest with you. The ceiling heights are gonna be ten feet on the inside. There is one thing I wanna mention. When I did the exit phase, we were so close to the road that it would have been impossible to use dynamite. I would have had to do foundation surveys all around. We, I plan on looking into using dynamite here, because there's a significant amount of ledge in this area right here, and it goes down that way. We did a number of test pits for the constructed wetland, and we found more tires, and so we'll probably be cleaning out a lot of tires. We've taken twenty-three hundred tires off the property so far. So you just don't know what's underground.
Very good, very good. Okay, so currently, any questions from board members as to what's been presented?
So, how many square feet of storage do you have now?
Little under sixty thousand square feet.
And how much you adding?
About fifty, oh, fifty-seven thousand.
So you're just about-
Almost exactly the same.
Just about doubling the size.
Yeah, and the intent is to build, if, if you call them too-long buildings, to build these two, wait, and then build those two, depending on how quickly these two fill up.
And, and you're adding some parking?
Um, not really.
I mean, I, I guess I'm trying to get a handle on that. I'm sure the people don't go daily, if most people don't go daily to this storage.
We get very few people that show up daily. There, there's a couple businesses in Newbury Port that keep their inventory with us, and they, but there's forty feet between all the buildings, so they generally go right up to the unit, open the door, go in, grab the stuff, and then leave.
So you don't see the need then for any additional parking?
No. No, we have quite a bit of parking in the front building, here. And there's parking all along the edges, back in here, back in here.
Okay, it looks like about ten or twelve painted spaces out there now. Plus they can really hold all those two.
People, generally, they pull right up in front of their unit, unless they come into the office and use the, in the office, we have a conference room with cubicles that people work out of, and we have restrooms, so they might come and work for the day out of the cubicles, or use the restrooms.
So these are your customers, you mean, that come in?
Yeah, they're salespeople that come in in the morning, they make their phone calls, figure out what they need, go out to the unit, grab their stuff and, and leave.
Okay, Martha, would we like to go through some of our consultants?
I highlighted a few I'd like to go over, right? Nope, we need to go through every one of them, some are more technical. Just adding notes here and there, but we have to.
Just to clarify, based on previous conversation, we'll have, Chris will go through some of these orally tonight, and then we'll be providing a written response and revised plans.
Okay. So I guess the first one we'll talk about is existing conditions, number two. Joe says, as noted in the list of waivers, the tree line only has been depicted on the plans, not every tree over eight inches caliber. That's a waiver we're asking for, that we'll, I guess we'll talk about at some point. Yeah, as we, we, the site plan shows a defined tree line that we're proposing, that we're not gonna, we're not gonna expand over. You know, there's probably hundreds of eight inch trees out there, you know, going out to locate every single one of them seems unnecessary, since we're gonna be taking them all out. That's, that's the reason for the variance on that, the reason for the, the reason for the waiver on that one.
We use the same setbacks as we did for the first two phases.
Yeah, we show a ten foot wetland setback that we're holding, generally throughout. Uh, so number, site plan, number three, the board may want the engineer to address whether a dumpster is required for the project. During construction, we'll have one out there, or two out there, but Bill doesn't believe that he needs one post-construction. He doesn't have one out there now, he says that, you know, people that come and go from the site, we go take their stuff and recycle it. So it's not really any real use for a dumpster, but just wanna kinda get the board's opinion on that.
And Bill does all the pickup daily.
And Bill goes around and picks it up. And site plan number seven. The project appears to be located over the reserved septic system for the front portion of the site. The engineers should discuss whether an alternative reserve area has been approved. And Martha made that comment in her review, that we do in fact show the original septic reserve area. It's shown. There's no showing on these plans.
It's behind building.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's behind the last building, it's where the first, what we're calling building eye will be, is the existing reserve area that was perked and test pitted. We're gonna have to move that, once spring rolls around, we can do some official test pits with the town, we'll find a new area for that.
The health agent also noted that in her, in to me.
And grading plan number two, the project involves substantial grade changes and likely ledge removal. Would we want in addition how the ledge removal is allowed to occur? We just kinda briefly went over that, that he, Bill would like to blast out here, now that we're well away from Route One and any neighbors. Ultimately, it's easier and more time efficient to do it that way. And let's see, any other ones? I guess number three, the project involves installation retaining walls, which will, which will, I guess, require the cemental of stamped drawings details by an engineer, which we agree with. Plans depict a modular block wall detail on sheet six, which is what we, which is out there, which is what is out there now, it's kind of a shade block retaining wall. The board may want to condition whether the contractor is allowed to use on-site rock in lieu of the modular block. And I think the intent, Bill, is to continue to use the block, the shade block retaining walls.
We use rock in phase one, in holders of sea wall, in phase two, we use the shade concrete blocks.
I think ultimately, a lot of the ledge that we blast and uncover out there will be ground up and used as part of the fill on site, instead of using it for retaining walls. And then number seven on grading plan, no comments. The proposed work clears an additional acre of woodland at the rear of the site. Regraded the area designated as temporary stockpile area and crushed stone area for parking storage. The board may want the engineer to provide additional information as the site does not appear to require additional parking and storage is provided in the buildings. And perhaps the intention is to rent space for recreational vehicles and boat storage, that is.
The intent is a staging area, I don't know if you remember, when I did phase one, I had a staging area where we kept all the buildings and heavy equipment. Phase two, I didn't do a staging area, and then we ended up getting one subsequently approved. And it was, it was a mountain of rock and ledge, you know, that we stored there while we were under construction. We also stored the buildings as they came in, and we stored the heavy equipment, and that's what the staging areas for.
So post-construction, are you gonna, do you have other plans for that area?
Yeah, I would probably, right now, behind building eight, we have crushed brick down. And I've been turning a lot of people with RVs away that wanna park there, because I know we're gonna hopefully be under construction in the spring. But at some point, I was thinking maybe I could do some RV storage around the traffic circle up here on Route One. I forgot what property it is, but the guy has put in some covered parking with solar on top, that may be an option. Um, and then RV storage.
And what about security, will that area be fenced, or?
Um, some of the area will be fenced. Right now, I have eighty-two cameras on the property, even if we put a fence up, someone's gonna go over it. Oh, when I was talking to Doug, he liked the idea of the wildlife corridor going through the property. So some areas, they're gonna be fenced and guardrails, and the rest of it's gonna be open, but it's gonna be on camera.
Anything else?
Oh, could you talk a little bit about your lighting plan, any, any efforts you, you know, can take to stop light migration, if that's the right term, trespass, if you call it?
All the lights currently on site are LED lights, you know, that are designed with an umbrella, just to, they don't shine up, they shine down, like an umbrella.
Yes, they're all down-facing lights, they're all ten to twelve feet high on the building, they'll match what's out there now. And we're required to, the site's a little temporary, we're not near any roads, but generally, we're required to make sure that there's zero, zero light runoff to a neighbor's property or onto a street. Obviously, we're out in the middle of the woods, but we're showing zero, you know, as we approach the edge of the wetland, we're approaching zero runoff. So I don't see any issues with any light spillage over, any adverse effects or anything. Don't have any poles up there, no pole lights, just.
We, we do now.
We do now, not in the proposed.
So these lights are right on the, like, the front of the building above the storage units, is that?
Yeah, they're mounted on the front of the building, you really can't see there, the other ones are under here. You can see.
Yeah, they just stick out the, on the face of the building.
Kind of over the door.
Yeah, yeah. You really can't see in this.
With what you did so far, what's already constructed, you came across a lot of ledge.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you anticipate as much ledge?
Yeah, I do, yeah. You know where you can see it and where you can't see it, right back in here, the elevation change is about twelve.
Yeah, it's hidden in the woods.
Hidden in the woods, and even when you're digging in the ground, that piece of ledge can slope down, and you find it. That's why we.
They get it out of there.
Yeah, and the plan is every fifty feet to go down six inches to get some sheet drainage, you know, down.
So the rear of the property, about some Boston Road, isn't it? How close are you gonna come to Boston Road with the new construction?
Well, there's two acres, the other plan shows the whole. So.
This is a hundred scale.
So we're coming back to our road here, yeah, somewhere in here. So this, this is an A and R that was conveyed to K and R site work. And then there's probably another two and a half acres to three acres back here.
So it's two hundred and fifty-nine feet to this new lot line here, probably about four hundred.
Uh, that, that was a piece that you cut, cut off last year, correct? Yeah, and do you have any, you don't have any residential butters in that area, do you?
None. The dump is here, this is all the wetlands, and.
County Essex County Greenbelt.
Yeah, and this is, a lot of this is wet over here. Actually, sled road goes down to my, goes down to about here, and then it goes underwater till about here, then it comes back up.
Okay.
Any other comments from Joe, I think he wanted to.
No, that was it.
Address right now.
Most of the other ones are involved details. He mentioned a lot of comments about stabilization, which he had never commented on before in fifteen years of any reviews from him, and now I've been sitting here for the last hour and a half, now I know why he's asking about that. We'll put a note on the plan of what we, we've taken note from plans we do in New Hampshire, that come up with, that there's a paragraph of what they consider stabilization. We'll add that to the plans.
I, I, yes, please, so go ahead, Martha, please.
So, um, I am quite honestly concerned about the lighting. I looked at the plan, and I know that there's no trespass onto abutting properties, but you are, there is trespass into the wooded area, and as I've learned more about lighting and the impact of lighting on, on habitat and you know, the woodland creatures and, and all of that, I mean, that, that's, that's pretty significant. You've also got a lot of light coming off the site right now. So one of the things I think would be very helpful to look at would be to contain the light, the ways to contain the light on the areas that, that are being improved, and keep, keep any trespass out of the, out of the woodland areas. And also make sure that there's no, you know, there's no sky glow.
Definitely down-facing, and we can look at, you know, we can look at removing the lights on the ends of the building. And that would definitely, you know, darken it much closer to the edge of pavement, and we got the light on each end of the building, so that's eight lights. I can look at that.
Are, are you, do your customers have access to the units at night?
Some of them do, the access is from six in the morning until ten at night. But there are some customers that, that are twenty-four hour customers, because they might have something drop shipped to their unit, and then they go there the next morning and get what they need for the inventory to distribute.
The, is there a way to, I understand the reason for the lighting, for security, so the cameras.
Yes.
See what's going on with the cameras, but is there any way to maybe shut half? Especially now that the project's almost gonna be double in size, to shut half of the lighting down, or have it on mo, some sort of motion?
Yeah, then I get into a liability issue if someone gets hurt.
Slips or falls.
Slips or falls, or someone gets hurt because there's someone hiding there, that's liability issue.
Because, uh, I mean, I would, it's my opinion, but when it's snowing, when it's foggy, it could be way out, which would be on the other side of Boston Road, the other side of the dump from this project, out on Newman Road in the marsh, and you see a substantial glow from that area. Uh, especially when it's foggy and snowing, I've been driving along and looked and been, what is that? Uh, I just would hate to see it be double of what it is now, under certain conditions, I guess, from a distance.
There, there, there are no pole lights here.
Yep.
So the pole lights are obviously up much higher, so the glow that you're seeing is from the pole lights. If you come over at night and you look at the existing buildings.
Yep.
Without the pole lights, you'll see that they just, they shine down, they shine from here down, and not up into the air.
So, and the pole lights are out in the front?
Yeah, the pole lights are out in the front, there's one at the entranceway here, and then there's a big turn. This wide area here, there's a pole light here, and there's a pole light for this big wide area here.
I think what you're hearing is there's a concern with regards to lighting, light scatter, its effects to the community, its effect to habitat, its effect to migratory stuff. Um, and there are communities, you know, throughout the country that have adopted standards, and we're looking, you know, what we should be doing in a constructive manner, uh, to facilitate that type of thought process. So you're kinda hearing a concern from the board, so this might be something we might wanna talk about, and kinda look into.
They, yeah, so do you want basically zero spillage at the edge of the.
Well, I think what, I think what we'll do is, we have some, maybe some guidelines that we can maybe start to have dialogue about, that we can share to help describe the different types of lighting options.
Well, I could talk to Bill Robertale, too, he did, he's done all the work here.
And or dimmable options, because LEDs have the option of dimming.
My concern is liability and safety.
Or, or, I understand, or, and our, and our, and our concern is all, all of those things.
Right.
And, uh, and some of these other environmental things, we are, you know, we are, we're in a migratory, you know, pathway, we have, you know, we, we, we need to get a handle on the things that we can start to get a handle on, and so you're hearing some, some concerns, so I think it's probably something that we should probably explore in further discussions.
Okay.
Makes kinda sense.
Yeah, I'll talk to Bill, too.
Okay.
Just so, so even having lights on the motion detectors would be a liability if people are in that area, they think.
You know, it, it, especially daylight savings, people wanna come in at four o'clock, you know, in December, and have lights over the unit. I had quite a few people, mostly women, move from other storage facilities because they were poorly lit, and they didn't feel safe. So I don't feel that we're overlit, but I think we could do something on the ends of the buildings here.
Yeah, we definitely want, you know, the lights between the buildings, I think are okay, but we'll look at them. It's just, I think it's the lights on the ends, whether we remove every other one, or all of them, or we can kill them somewhere, or we can do something with bringing these numbers down, so the zeros are just kinda contained in the edge of the pavement, we don't wanna totally pitch back, but.
No, no, I mean, obviously.
I understand, yeah, the need for, they need lighting there, but I think.
There's ways we can make that work, you know, reduce the voltage of the lights.
Yeah, I'd, I'd think with, with most motion sensors, you might find them going on and off all night anyway.
Well, I have a lot of turkeys and deer that walk through the property, and especially.
More distracting.
Back in here, there's, there's deer that muck through here, or, or turkeys.
So.
We're stuck in them at twelve feet high, we can look at lower them to ten feet.
Conversation that maybe can.
Maybe putting, you know, just getting it, getting it down, so there's cutoff, so it's not going into the, you know, into the tree areas. I mean, I think there, if you can look at it, that would be.
Yeah. All right, um, anything else you wanna share? Okay. So I think what I'd like to do is just kinda. So I think what I'd like to do is just kind of, uh, identify, uh, correspondence that we've had. Uh, we've had, heard from, uh, our, uh, Ned Rogers from the Board of Health, uh, with a potential disturbance to the approached, uh, beach field, and I think we just, we've touched on that. As far as...
Assessors had no comments.
Assessors had no comments, okay. Highway conservation. Couple of things is noted. Set to the reserve, so, okay, we'll talk about that. Okay. Um, assessors? No comments?
I am waiting for, um, I'm waiting for some feedback from the chief. I know that you included the, the full top journey radius plan, um, but I'm waiting for some feedback from him to see if he has any, any any concerns that weren't expressed in whatever conversations.
Yeah, initially these buildings were, like I said, they were apart, and when I sat down with them, we figured a way to make them so the truck could get all the way around.
That may concon happy too, because instead of thirty-foot gap between the buildings, these buildings pushed out further towards the wetlands. Which is a big thing. Plus, uh, contact to the buffer zone.
And also the police chief said to me verbally that they, he had no comments.
Okay. Are there any public comments you'd like to be?
Yeah, they could.
Come on up, identify yourself. Can stand over here at this microphone?
Uh, my name's Mike Jaffe from A. Ross Lane. And I'm here to speak to you regarding the lighting at the self-storage facility, the special permit. Um, I've got a prepared speech here. I did have some comments as well regarding the statements that these gentlemen made, mostly the engineer. The lights that are on poles are, um, spotlights. They're not downlights. They should, their, lights on poles are very good ways to, um, mitigate light sky glow and light trespass, but the way these lights are set up, it's basically just pole lights. So there, there are spotlights on poles that shine at maybe a forty-five degree angle, maybe a little bit down more, but those lights are lighting up the sky. They are way too bright. I, I respect your opinion that you have liability concerns, you obviously do. But that facility is probably three or four times brighter than it needs to be, maybe more. I would be, I would be, I think we should understand how many lumens per acre are there now and how many will be there, because there are standards out there that are set for best practices and how that's, how that is, um, managed in a responsible manner. Um, I don't agree with the idea that dimmers, that motion sensors would be good. I think that would be disruptive to wildlife and people. I think dimmer lights would be a better. Also speaking to the, um, to the spotlights on the poles, the wall packs are mounted on the walls. Those are responsible for light trespass that ec- that exits the property. Those lights are not lit down, they're not shielded, they're completely unshielded, and they just spray light off the property. And, um, that's why you see that property when you're half a mile down the road, off on Boston Road, you see the sky lit up like Fenway Park when you look at this property from a distance. It is way overlit. And I, and I don't think it really benefits you or your customers or anyone. I think it was just not designed properly, not designed thoughtfully. And it is of no benefit to anyone at all.
Just to clarify, you're talking about the existing lighting?
I'm talking about the existing lighting. And I think, I think that kind of goes together with your willingness to provide a special permit, that that should be fixed. Um, okay, let me get to the, um, thing I wrote up here. So the existing lighting at Newbury Self Storage puts out a significant amount of, uh, blue light, much of it misdirected towards the road, towards the woods and the neighboring properties, and much towards the sky. It puts, it puts off the sky glow each and every, um, nighttime hour. I was there at three P M. last night and the storage facility, the sky above, and the woods adjacent were all as bright as Fenway Park. This misdirected light is wasted light, which is wasted energy, and it is the definition of light pollution. Light pollution has significant adverse impacts on wildlife and the natural hunting and feeding patterns of wildlife, birds and the migratory patterns of birds, birds of prey like owls that rely on their superior nighttime vision to hunt under a naturally dark sky, humans and their natural rhythms and ability to generate and maintain proper melatonin levels, and most obviously to people's ability to enjoy a naturally dark sky and all the beauty it has to offer. The sky glow from overlit properties, this and many others, destroys people's ability to see the dark sky. More light is not safer or not secure. Only small amounts of light are needed to provide safety, security, and visibility at night. Studies have shown that lit properties experience no less crime than unlit properties. And light pollution is a widespread property around town, not limited to the storage facility. I'm here to advocate for best practices, or at least much better practices, be followed if the special permit is to be granted. And also to advocate for the mitigation at the existing facility so that the light pollution it emits is greatly reduced. Best practices dictate nighttime exterior light should be used when it's needed, where it's needed, and in the amount needed, not too bright. When you need, when you need light means simply you don't leave outdoor lights on unless there's a purpose, don't leave them on all night, and if there's truly no alternative to dim them down significantly. Where you need it means you don't direct the light into the sky, you don't direct the light into the streets, into, into dri- into oncoming drivers' eyes, and you don't elect, direct the light towards neighboring properties and naturalized areas. Only direct it downwards towards the ground where it's needed. And in the amount necessary means you just, means you minimize the amount of light used. Best practices generally does not mean additional cost, and it often means lower cost. This is very important to acknowledge. What is, what is required is simply some thoughtful planning, the recognition that light pollution is a problem that should be addressed, and that taking a few steps will have a major impact. These steps are, all, all lights should be shielded, no light should be directed above the horizontal plane, non-shielded spotlight should never be used, and partially shielded lighting should be minimized and only used if absolutely needed. According to the Flagstaff Dark Sky Coalition, proper shielding of light will reduce sky glow by fifty to ninety percent compared to a mix of shielded and unshielded light. Uh, light temperature and the spectrum of light sources must be considered and kept low with yellow light sources preferred. New LEDs are often four thousand K and above and blue, which is generally considered to be harsh, unappealing, and unhealthy. LED lights should ideally be twenty-two hundred K, but never above three thousand K. And three, the amount of light must be considered and a lumen cap imposed. Per the Flagstaff Arizona Code, lumens of fifty thousand per acre is generally considered the maximum permitted with up to a hundred thousand lumens per acre in certain circumstances. Um, I and many others see light pollution the same as traditional pollution. I look at light pollution the same way as I look at a Dunkin' Donuts cup tossed to the side of the road. I look at all the bright lights all over the place on residential and commercial properties that are shining at all hours of the night and into the morning, aimed thoughtlessly at the streets, aimed at neighboring properties, spraying excess and entirely unneeded light into wooded areas, spraying light onto beaches and onto rivers and onto the marshes. I look at this exactly the same as seeing a fast food bag of trash on the side of the road. Um, the dark sky in its natural form is a beautiful thing, but it's said that eight of ten people will never get to see the Milky Way because of light pollution. In its purest form, the dark night sky is as beautiful as the ocean, as the marshes and rivers we have here in Newbury, as the mountains, and as many of our national parks. The dark night sky complements all of these beautiful places as well. Must respect and preserve this. Um, our ask is this, in considering the expansion of the Newbury Self Storage and also in considering all future developments in the town of Newbury, that limits are set on total lumens per acre, that only fully shielded downward facing lights be permitted, and if partially shielded lights be permitted, a clear hardship should be displayed. That spectrum or temperature of the light should be considered and under three thousand K be required with, if used with LED lights, and the hours of operation of exterior lighting be limited. Additionally, we ask that as a condition of the issuance of this special permit, that the current Newbury Self Storage facility be required to take steps to mitigate the light pollution that it causes. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have your, want to leave that with what you just read to?
Yeah, I'll leave.
Beautiful. Thank you. Thanks very much, Mike. Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay. Um... Any other questions from board members? Okay. Um, so I think at this time, I'd like to probably continue this until a couple of little issues are buttoned up, so...
Right, may need to address Joe's comments.
Right. So let's, uh, pick a date so we can continue this.
Discuss waivers now or wait till next time?
I would, do you want to hear from, want to see where they come back with Joe's comments before we discuss waivers, or do you want to hear those now?
Well, it might make sense to discuss waivers, because that might impact what they do going forward.
Yes, it's all yours. Go ahead.
I already mentioned one waiver, the waiver from the section A four, B eight. Trees over eight inches in caliper to be shown. Our waiver is, we show a defined tree line on the perimeter of the site in lieu of locating every eight-inch caliper tree on site.
Right.
Waiver number two is section A four, B thirteen signage. We're not proposing any new signage. There's obviously signage out front here. No need for any signage out back. Section A four, B fourteen landscaping. We're requesting a waiver from no new landscaping being proposed. We've got landscaping out front here, we've got landscaping on the side out front, well, on Route one, where it's most important, visible to the public, driving by Route one. And the last one was a waiver request from A six, impact assessments. We are requesting a waiver from any of those impact assessments. Find that section.
Traffic, environmental.
Yeah, traffic, we, we have minimal traffic per day coming in and out of the site. Let me see what the other two are. Once a community impact assessment, fiscal impact assessment, the assessment shall consider the existing and pro- existing and projected demand for municipal services, revenues to the town, and fiscal economic impacts. We have existing septic system, existing well, so there's no municipal utilities coming into the site, so I don't think there's a, we don't think there's a need for assessment on that. And then environmental impact assessment, the purpose shall be to determine existing and expected post-development environmental conditions, including air and water quality, groundwater pollution, you know, any stormwater is going to be treated before it's discharged into the wetlands, noise levels, there's no noise out here, harmful or noxious emissions, there's nothing there, damage or threat to wetlands and flood plain. You know, we're keeping a ten-foot wetland setback to, uh, with grading, so there's no, there's no filling of wetlands on the site. Uh, the potential for erosion or sedimentation. We are proposing silk fence and hayveals along the entire perimeter of the wetlands. Smoke odors, vibration, electromagnetic radiation shall also be identified and addressed. We don't have any of those on the site.
Okay. Any other concerns? Um, then I would like to continue this, so. Mary?
Yes.
Hi, do you have any concerns, concerns or questions?
Um, no, I think the lighting questions were foremost of my mind and blasting, so those are pretty much taken care of.
Okay. Good, good, good. Okay.
Is that what you asked?
Yes, 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 yes. Thank you.
Okay.
Very good. Um, then I'd like to, uh, continue this public hearing. And when do you think would be a good time to end this, Martha?
Um, well, I guess one question is how quickly you could turn things, you know, do the response to Joe's comments and, and make any related changes in time to get it back to Joe and ask for review.
Yeah, my intent, my goal was to get these back in by mid-next week. Uh, I'm not here that week of, uh, February vacation, so I, uh, I guess we can keep that meeting in mind, I guess. I guess we can see what Joe's comments are coming back, if they're if they're all addressed or if they're minor in nature, we can kind of revisit whether we continue it or not, but maybe we can, we can keep two weeks from now open, or...
And does that give you enough time to, um, you know, really review the lighting?
I think so, yeah. I'll talk to the lighting company we use and discuss some options and...
Including mitigation, what's there now?
We can take a look at that as well.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful.
So you were going to be away February vacation week?
Yes.
Okay. Um... Do you want to go for the fourth, Martha?
Well, we've got, we've got the golf center on the fourth now.
Can we go first?
You didn't enjoy that?
Yeah, I did.
Wasn't supposed to be funny.
Thought I'd ask.
Do you want to, want to go for seven o'clock?
It might be better to aim for like six forty.
Pre-meeting?
I mean, this would probably take more than fifteen minutes, and so we have both boards together for the, uh, at seven fifteen.
Okay, so it's good.
I mean, can I ask, when, when would you, um, uh, plan to break ground on all this? I mean, is a couple of weeks going to make any difference to you?
No, it's going to make a couple of difference when we come back, when we come back, you know, with all the questions answered. We're going to break ground and, uh, as soon as we can. But, um, it remains a matter of ordering the building because it's such a long lead time.
And lining up all the trees, which I've already spoken to, but I haven't obviously scheduled anyone.
But there's a lot of site work that's going to need to be done. You're not going to be able to get out there to do the perks for a new reserve until when, April?
Broadway.
So, um...
And look at this second month in the, the eighteen.
We still won't have the information about the reserve, but, uh...
Would it be best to have that information?
Okay, that's, then that could be granted as a condition of approval. I mean, if, if we never found a, another spot on site to perk, I mean, this whole thing is, you know, kind of up in the air, but we don't foresee any issues with finding another spot on site to perk, but we can't do that for two months.
So let's go, let's go with the eighteenth.
Okay, we're actually doing.
Okay.
So we're continuing two hearings.
We're continuing two hearings, and so we're going to first vote on continuing the site plan review. So Mary, you're going to be voting on that one. Woody, you're going to hold your, and then we'll vote on the...
Sorry, I can't hear with the coughing. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. So we're going to be doing two votes, uh, so
Right.
Um, so the first is going to, um, to continue the, a, a motion to continue the, uh, site plan review application for expansion of the Newbury Self Storage. And so I take a, a motion to continue that to the eighteenth of March at seven fifteen?
I would so move.
Oh, somebody likes a seven?
Agreed.
Okay, agreed. Uh, any further discussion on the motion? Okay. Uh, all in favor of the motion? We have to do it by voice, so Mary, you're going to go first?
Yes.
Wonderful.
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Peter, yes. Okay. Uh, on our second motion, which would be the, to continue the special permit application for the expansion of Newbury Self Storage, one thirty-one Newport Turnpike, map thirty, R thirty-six, parcels twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, motion to continue to the eighteenth of March, seven fifteen?
I'd so move.
And so that, uh, in a second. Uh, any further discussion? Okay. All in favor? Mary, would you like to vote?
Uh, yes.
Wonderful. Woody?
Yes.
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 Leslie, yes?
Yes.
And then Peter's yes. Very good.
Thank you.
We'll see you on the eighteenth. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Look forward to working out the, uh, lighting concerns.
That's something.
So we're a little bit behind our eight fifteen. Okay.
I guess maybe this should be short.
It should be.
A guest here.
Okay. Um, so I'm just going to, uh, uh, a potential open meeting law violation, uh, correction with... correction with a general discussion regarding special permits and zoning. Uh, the Board of Selectmen received a correspondence on the twenty-eighth of, uh, January, uh, twenty twenty. I will read it. It is addressed to J.R. Colby, Board of Selectmen Chairman, Town of Newbury, twelve Kentway Suite, one-on-one Byfield, Mass. Subject complaint against Selectman Alicia Greco. Chairman Colby, on Wednesday evening, January twenty-second, there was a planning board meeting at the town hall. The meeting was adjourned at the close of business and the majority of the attending public left the meeting room. Selectman Greco then approached the planning board and sat to discuss an issue of permitting. The discussion carried on for approximately fifteen to twenty minutes. The planning board had a quorum present, although there were, they were not in session. This is a violation by Selectman Greco of Code of Ethics, items two, three, eight, thirteen, fourteen, sixteen, uh, in the open meeting law. Additionally, the planning board should be held accountable and explain why this conduct was allowed. Uh, this was signed sincerely, Jim Moran, uh, with C.C.'s Damon Jesperson, Jeffrey Walker, Alicia Greco, Mike Doyle, Tracy Blaze, Martha Taylor, Peter Pecos, Lawrence Murphy, George Morse, Leslie Matthews, Mary Stone, Woody Knight, Emily Noble, and Jen Sliris. Um, would anybody like to comment on this?
Well, you know, I can certainly share my recollection of what happened that night. Uh, there was a regular meeting, and I think of the members present, according to my notes, were yourself, Peter, the chair, Leslie, myself, Woody, and Martha Taylor. Uh, George Morse and Mary Stone were not present. The meeting was adjourned, and there was a conversation we had with the select woman Greco. My memory of the conversation is that it was very general in nature, generic, for lack of a better term. We didn't discuss any particular special permit, uh, that was pending before the board or anything that we reasonably anticipated would be pending in the future. Uh, it was really just more about, um, uh, process and procedure, at, at least is, is my memory of it. Mr. Moran said it lasted for fifteen to twenty minutes. I, as far as I know, he wasn't here then, so I'm not sure what the source of his information is. I, I wouldn't, I, I think it could have been fifteen minutes or so before the, the room finally cleared. It's not my memory that the conversation lasted that long. The, in my humble opinion, I, I don't think that there was any violation of the open meeting law. The open meeting law is, is directed, or it, it addresses, um, deliberations of the public body, you know, information shared towards arriving at a decision, and I don't think that was the case here. That said, I think we, I, I can appreciate where Mr. Moran is coming from in his letter, quite frankly. Um, I, I think it's something that we ought to be sensitive to in the future. I mean, it's, it, obviously, we want, we want to be sure that we, um, comply with the letter of the open meeting law, but we can't expect every member of the public to be familiar with all the nuances of that particular statute, and I think it's very important that going forward, uh, that we not allow a situation where there's an appearance of impropriety. So in the future, I, I, again, once again, I, I, I don't see that there was any technical violation, uh, of the open meeting law or actual violation, but I, I, it's something we should, we should appreciate Mr. Moran's comments and, uh, his concerns and act accordingly in the future.
Any other comments or conversation?
So does it work, so does it work that you send this gentleman a letter saying, um, you know, we, we believe that nothing was said that, you know, was beyond policy or procedure or whatever and didn't, wouldn't impact the public, um, consciousness or awareness of an issue. Um, however, we are aware now of your sensitivity and, and the need for more vigilance on this kind of an issue, and thanks for bringing up something that I have to say here.
Well, I think, yeah, I think we're just trying to, uh, identify that a letter came to the Board of Selectmen.
Right.
And so this was, I think it came to the Board of Selectmen, and I think they'll probably be the, the entity to, uh, to.
To respond.
To address it, to respond, but, you know, we were mentioned, um, you know, to, to explain our, our conduct, and I think that's what we're doing right now. Um, so I think, I think that's, that's, that would be appropriate and adequate.
Yeah, there, there were other allegations, uh, in the letter that didn't specify, that went beyond the open meeting law, um, issue uh, towards Selectwoman Greco, and I, I think that would be more appropriately, uh, addressed by the Board of Selectmen in this.
Right.
Yeah, I don't.
But it's good that it was brought up. I mean, it's very nice to have somebody bring something up and needs to be addressed and, uh, you know, thank you for doing it, and we're, we're aware of it now.
Thank you.
I think it was, uh, anything that the board said basically was all, like you said, Larry, was all generality.
Yeah, it was just procedure and.
There were no specifics.
No. Not, not that I can recall.
I, I don't believe there are any deliberations or, you know, anything that would be considered anywhere near that, so of substitution.
Can I just ask a question, because I'm just not sure about this? Is an opinion considered into the deliberation? You know, if somebody gave their own, their own opinion on their feelings about subject matter, does that become part of a deliberation? Or does that step?
I, I think it would depend on, on what the opinion is about. I mean, if it's an opinion as to when we're going to meet next, no. I, that's not a deliberation. If it's an opinion on whether or not, um, a certain pending special permit should be allowed or disallowed, that would clearly be a violation, you know, of the open meeting law. As long as there was a quorum present. And so it, it's almost a case-by-case basis, and it's not, not always a bright line test either, I'm afraid. But I, I think, I think the, the prudent thing to do is just to avoid, you know, it's very easy, I think, once you get, you may be, you may be talking, uh, um, just having a friendly conversation, but if you have a quorum present, you got to watch it. It can't, it's easy to stray across that line.
So I.
I don't think it happened in this case, but we should be, we should learn from this.
Yeah, I think Larry's comments are.
Whatever, what Larry's saying is that we, we didn't step over the line.
We, no, I, I don't think so, and I think, uh, just as a guideline, when we get done with our meeting, we leave the room and we have no discussions, and that's, that's as simple as it can be, and, you know, the.
It's a safe thing to do.
It's the safest thing to do. So just so there can't be any misinterpretation about anything or, you know. Woody, do you want to say anything?
No, I, I agree with what Larry said. I don't think we was deliberate any deliberating on anything in particular, and I don't think it was barely ten minutes long, so, uh, it was a conversation, but we will avoid anything like that in the future.
So I just wanted to have that on our agenda so that we could address it.
Yes, we've got it in the record. We've got it in the minutes.
And it's, and it's concluded. Okay, great. Thanks, everybody. My goodness. So we are ready. We are ready to talk about wireless communication. Come on up. Oh, yeah.
Oh, God.
Do you have about thirty seconds?
I'm here all night. I'll get a room.
Has he been here since seven? This might be yours.
So what we're going to be moving into, just so that folks are aware, we're going to be going into our old business. And this is going to be regarding zoning amendments for, uh, April twenty twenty annual town meeting. And we have our consultant who's going to kind of give us a, a presentation on our wireless communication, um, a project that we're working on. Thank you. Have a good night. Mary, I hope I don't lose you. I'm, I'm down to twenty-seven percent.
I know. I, I was wondering if I was still hooked in.
You're still hooked in at three hours and three minutes and forty-one seconds.
Stop call.
Work, given the battery on this cell phone will work out today.
Come on over, and we have, we have a nice microphone for you there to.
Awesome. Great. So is this broadcasting live or being recorded?
We are broadcasting live.
Okay, we're on TV, so video is all. Awesome.
I'm going to. So. All right.
I will do that.
I should start. You can go. Go ahead.
Okay, for the record, my name is David Maxson. I'm with Isotrop and welcome to the, uh, board on, um, all things wireless. Uh, thank you for having me. Um, so, uh, our project is to do sort of two things in parallel. One is to assess wireless coverage in town, see if we can model some options for identifying areas, if not specific locations, to propose, uh, updating the wireless bylaw overlay district or however we want to do it, to add properties to, uh, being eligible for, uh, cell towers under the bylaw. And then second is to review the bylaw itself and talk about it and its structure. Did everyone get the markup that I circulated about a month ago? We don't think looking at.
Yeah, I, I did not, just because it sounded like there were going to be some additional.
Yeah, yeah, and all this was, was, um, just comments on, on, uh, the existing language of the bylaws. What I'll do is summarize that. We won't go through that point by point tonight. But first, the, the question is, is about coverage. So what I have on the screen right now is one of the wireless carriers that we measured when, uh, we drove throughout the town with specially equipped cell phones and collected data on cellphone coverage. And so we have here is, um, uh, the light green is really good signal, the yellow is good signal, the blue is marginal, we call it. Those are areas where you'd probably make a call and it'd probably be pretty constant, pretty reliable. But once you go inside, it might be less viable than it is when you're outside or in your car. So that gives us a sense for streetwise, what, what the coverage in town is like. And you can see some black spots as well, that, uh, the, the signal just is gone below, um, even passable. You know, if you're just standing in just the right spot, facing the right way, you might be able to make a call and get it through. Yes?
Do these findings vary depending on the provider?
Uh, yes, and that's, what we're looking at right now is AT&amp;T. Pressing this button will work. Okay, page two, look at that. All right, here's T-Mobile. So I'll just click back to AT&amp;T real quick. And T-Mobile. AT&amp;T, click, T-Mobile. You can see there's, there, the, the green and blue, uh, green and yellows are pretty much in the same places, almost, because they're many, uh, uh, at the same cell sites, uh, such as the, uh, the yard near the police station where the, the school buses are stored, um, the water tank, uh, near here on this end of town. And, uh, that's T-Mobile. So then if we go one click more, we'll get to our Verizon data. Now, you'll notice in the, is that a laser? Oh, look at that. It's not showing up on the screen. It shows up on the wall, but. Anyway, down by Parker River, um, you can see a couple of spots of one A that, uh, there is no data and our Verizon cellphone having nothing to do with coverage, but having to do with its desire not to be friendly, uh, just didn't collect any data for those stretches. We can assume that they're blue, uh, like T-Mobile and like AT&amp;T. So there is a cell site to the south in Rowley, and there's the one just to the north of the town line up on, um, was it Parker Street, Parker Road up in, uh, Newbury Port? And so we tried to capture the coverage from those. Now that's going to be a little different to look at. So I'll have to go over here. I'll come back. Where's the person? Where's the person? All right, so. All right, so this is, um, what we've done is we've, we've simulated having, uh, transmitters at these different cell towers that we've, that we know about. And so the green underlay below the, the drive test that we saw before, and I picked the AT&amp;T drive test just to have one there, uh, the green underlay is the computer's estimate of what the overall coverage is, and to some extent, it's, the green is consistent with the green and yellow uh, of the, uh, the drive test, although there are places where the computer is showing more coverage than the drive test captured. And there's two factors in that. One is it tends to be in flat areas where the computer is estimating less signal attenuation because it may be, uh, low vegetation or that sort of thing. And it, so the computer is being perhaps a little bit optimistic. And then second is in those same areas, uh, the, the, um, the cell phones are like on the dashboard in a vehicle. So depending on which direction the vehicle's traveling, it might have a, a better or a poorer reception. So there's going to be some variability between the computer model and the, uh, uh, the, the drive test data, but statistically, we can compare those two sets of data and determine that they're, on the average, they're, they're both, um, similar, uh, in terms of, uh, average signal strength. So what we're seeing here is, um, the existing cell towers, um, and the coverage that we're getting from them, and, um, the one, one of the differences is we've got the site marked bus yard where T-Mobile and, uh, AT&amp;T are, and then there's the tower at the state police station closer to I ninety-five. That has coverage, um, that's for Verizon, which is a little bit better on I ninety-five heading south than, than the, the, this particular facility that the bus yard is, but, um, they're similar and they're not, probably not fatal. It's probably good enough signal along the interstate to, uh, keep people happy for a while. So what we're seeing, uh, is, um, basically issues along, uh, one A, which we've known about, and issues out on, uh, Plum Island and issues down in the, uh, if there's a name for that area down to the southwest where the, uh, Triton School is. I, I don't know what the name of that area is, but, uh, down there is, it's, it's very spotty. And, uh, and it's, as you know, it's a, it's an area with quite a bit of residential development in addition to the school. So, um, when cell phones are in those areas, even if they have a good connection with the nearest cell site in, you know, So when cell phones are in those areas, even if they have a good connection with the nearest cell site in, you know, blue, because you're the front of the house facing the cell site and you're getting a good signal in your living room, but maybe not in the back in your kitchen. The cell site is still working hard to communicate with you. And it takes more resources to send a text or a block of data to you from the cell site when you're at a distance than it does when you're in good signal strength. So the people out on the edges are, in a way, sort of drawing down the capacity of an otherwise perfectly good cell site off in the distance. So one of the reasons that carriers are coming back to put in more cell sites, where they might have mediocre or marginal coverage is for capacity purposes, so that they don't have too much demand on, on the existing cell sites. Now, if you've seen the hockey stick curves of data consumption over the last decade and projections into the next decade, all of our data usage on our wireless devices is still growing. As we get more data speeds, we're tending to use video more. Social media has a lot more video than it used to have, so that when you're looking at Facebook, you get a video that's rolling while you're scrolling through your, your pages. So there's all this additional activity going on, on the networks that are responding to consumer demand, basically. Yeah, you're trying to shut off that.
Yeah.
Yeah, send it for a longer, more than 10 minutes.
Yes.
So what I'll go to next is awesome, thank you, is I'll go to some simulations of locations that we picked. These are not proposals so much as what ifs, and if people think that the locations that we picked are good ideas. Discuss that. So the next one that we'll look at is we fired up two cell sites. We've, we set up one at, do I have the height there? A 100 foot tall cell tower pole, whatever you want to call it, mast, at Triton. And I measured the lamp posts around the ball fields, football field, they're 60 feet. So, and when I was first coming west, kind of around and down the hill, I could see the top of the lamp post. I thought, oh, there's a spot. So this would be potentially 40 feet taller, so it would be more visible to residents and neighbors. But there's, there's a couple of good things about using school properties. They're large. They have obviously fairly intensive non-residential development on them already. And, and the last one is, in this day and age when people are concerned about having good communications inside schools, there's nothing better than having a cell site down the store. So there's a bunch of reasons why that property might be a good place to put a cell tower. Obviously, that needs the, you know, have a conversation with the school and the people who are in charge of it. So as you can see, what that does is it spreads this wonderful solid green block of coverage pretty much around the entire arc of streets in that area that was previously just hit with the spotty signal. And for that matter, the spotty signal was from the uni pole, which not all the carriers are on, as far as we could tell. So it, that location is, is one that's, from my perspective, very enticing, but I don't live there. So I know it's up to, up to everyone to talk about whether that's the spot or whether there's another spot in that area that, that might be desirable for placing a cell tower. People often ask, well, can't we do this with utility poles and that sort of thing? And unfortunately, what we're finding is that unless you're in a densely occupied area, the utility pole installations are not very effective and the carriers don't really want to do them. So for instance, on the, the streets of Hull, Massachusetts, which is on a peninsula and very densely developed with, they're probably eighth acre or less parcels with houses and houses and houses. They have a system that has antennas on utility poles, also because there was no place to put a cell tower. So it works there, but it's probably not going to work in a neighborhood like the one here on the southwest. And then the other one place that we went to is, unfortunately, it's a skinny property, the DPW property. Way back when, T-Mobile had proposed something at a tower at Iron Moon Farm years ago. And that went into litigation and I was actually a consultant to the town on that. And then something happened and it never got, T-Mobile never, I'm not sure if they didn't prevail in federal court or whether they just never got around to building it after prevailing. But either way, that area is, as we saw on the previous map, a bit of an issue coverage wise. Now, the difficulty is, in addition to the fact it's a narrow property, so if you put up something like a 90-foot pole, we didn't think we need to be quite as high because the terrain is a lot less rugged there. There is the, the hill, the, what is it? Little Old Town Hill?
Old Town Hill.
Okay. And Little Old Town Road. That, it does block the signal going south, so it doesn't quite make it down to some of those enclaves where you're just north of the Parker River. Ideally, you'd be further east and a little further south so that you could shoot around the hill. But if you look at the way the parcels are laid out there and the way the land is laid out, the way the territory is, it's very quickly becomes marsh. And, you know, there are some, some residential streets that come off of 1A there. So this being a, another one of those fairly intensive non-residential uses, a DPW yard is, is often a desirable spot for a cell site. If we look up at Plum Island, we can see that because the, it's all marsh, that, that a tower at the DPW site does throw quite a bit of signal up to the north and northeast. Although on the beach side of things, because of the, what little lay of the land there is and because of the buildings, there may still be a kind of weak signal in Plum Island. But that might be enough to make a lot of people a lot happier. As you go south into the reserve, away from where the residential development is, this throws signal out there that would be really good, very reliable and would help people who might have an emergency and need to make a 911 call. Let me go to the next map. Okay, so we we took a chance here and this is pretty unlikely because what we did is we found a spot in the trees, on the high ground, on the hill behind the residences. So the residences that are looking out from, from the fronts of their homes, across their lawns and across the wonderful view sheds out to the marshes, wouldn't see a tower. In fact, one of these property owners would have to agree to have a tower in the woods behind their houses. So there's a lot of ifs there. This is the kind of coverage you could get from the top of the hill with a relatively short tower. What we did here was we picked something that was probably, you know, just above the tree line, 75 feet. The difficulty with that is if you have three or four wireless carriers that want to get coverage there, you might need two towers and they might need to be 85 feet or 90 feet in order to keep them short and have them high enough to have two carriers on them. So it's pretty clear you don't need 140-foot tower on top of that hill to, to provide that, that level of coverage. And as you can see, it's pretty rock'em, sock'em good. And so that's one thing to, to sort of gauge is whether the residents live up there and the, and, and the townspeople who might have to look at it would be willing to tolerate a cell tower up on the top of that hill, a short one, short cell tower. So it was a kind of a what if. We have done previously some analysis of putting something down in, right at the Parker River. But because that's low land and the hill is directly north of it, the coverage isn't particularly good in Newbury. And since there is already a cell tower in Rowley that carries coverage pretty close to the town boundary, there really isn't a need to be that close to the Rowley border with a cell site in Newbury. Excellent. Okay, Mark, you keep clearing those pop-up messages.
I'm sorry.
And then the last one we did was, well, what if you could put something on Plum Island where the development is? What would that look like? So we, we found some town-owned properties up there that, conceivably, you could put a a pole, 35 feet tall, which is what the utility poles are. But if you're looking for something that's more kind of macro cell-like, that has more capacity than something on a pole, you could do something like a, a structure that looks like a house with a widow's walk on the top and camouflage antennas behind the railing of the widow's walk. Depends on how creative people want to be and whether it's of interest to the carriers. So this is another way to attack the Plum Island coverage problem and, and it does pretty well, even at, at such low height. That also means that's encouraging for the placement of these small cells that the carriers are now doing on utility poles and not even bothering with a macro cell installation because they could potentially put one or two of those cans on utility poles out there and get the covers they need. I think hadn't Verizon tried that?
Verizon had tried that and there's actually still ongoing conversation about that.
Okay.
But I think we, you know, it's on, it's in the road right of way, essentially.
Right. And, and that's the thing is FCC came out, getting my years mixed up now, a year ago, with some rules about small cells in, in the public way. And the towns should have separate grant of location regulations that clearly specify the town's expectations. Because if an application comes in and you don't have those regulations, you can't tell them after the fact what your, your requirements are in terms of appearance and what, what limited things that you have authority to control on the public way. The FCC has kind of granted wireless companies public utility-like rights in the public way. As long as their antenna cans are no more than, I forget what it is, like three cubic feet in the volume. And then the electronics that hang on the utility pole can be quite a bit more volume. But those rules have to be addressed separately in part because it's a, it's a grant of location kind of a thing rather than a, a traditional zoning issue. So, but we can see that if we, if there was coverage from a 35-foot-high installation out there, that we still have issues in the, you know, the Route 1A area. So that's, that question down by where the DPW is and where the hill is, is an open one for, for discussion on where the town might be willing to point wireless companies to look to put a cell tower. Was, was that a question or a comment from the phone?
No, someone clearing their throat, I think.
Okay. Yes, we've all got it. Great. So that's, that's what we've looked at with that. Any questions about the coverage stuff and the possibilities with cell sites?
So if we potentially did something, you know, DPW-ish, that brings us almost to the, and we do something at Triton, that gives us a lot of coverage except around town hillish area, if I have that right.
Well, just south of town hillish, there's a little, little bit of a gap.
And so if that's the case, could something happen, you know, along the Parker River sort of thing where like the marina is to, to push something north?
Yeah, I think at that point, it's such a small, relatively small footprint.
Yep.
Because you can see the proximity of the Rowley Tower and the DPW Tower. It's, it's closer to the DPW site, but because of the hill, it's kind of in shadow.
So you know what I'm talking about, right?
Yeah, yeah. So that black spot right there. That is something where if a carrier finds that after doing cell towers, they might come back with a utility pole proposal to fill in the difference. Especially if, as, as we know, there's, you know, there's a fair amount of, there's some activity there with the marinas and and that, that might be enough to convince them to, to, to do something. But that would happen after they get the, the big coverage footprints from macro cell sites.
So basically the, the recommendations, if I understand this right and I can hold it down, would be if we could do something in the Triton vicinity, that would be very beneficial. If you do something in the DPW vicinity, that would be beneficial. That would blow up a lot of stuff and give us a lot of coverage and we have this little shadow area that maybe can be picked up with something smaller to broadcast north.
Yes, unless you can find a way to move southeast of the DPW site. Just the, the only town parcel I found down there was probably inaccessible and probably all wetland anyway. Because if you can go kind of down and around the, the hill, so that you've got a line of sight up and down 1A at the, at the bend, you, you get the best of both worlds. But I didn't, on the property maps, I didn't see anything that jumped out at me as, as an opportunity. Now, you know, could you put a cell tower that looks like an osprey nest? You know, be creative. Potentially. In fact, many cell towers are osprey nesting places anyway. And the only thing I'm thinking, really comment on was just to the north by the Newbury Port line. Coverage from the DPW doesn't quite make it. And the other cell sites that are a little to the west don't quite make it. So that's another place where if you had coverage from a DPW-like site, it might be adequate just to have more of these small cells to kind of fill in the gaps up, up there. Or they may be interested in doing something that straddles the line and gets better coverage up in, you know, the waterfront area in Newbury Port. So.
The First Parish Church is up there.
And the First Parish Church, there is a, there is a steeple that is not, I guess, being used right now for cellular?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, I seem to recall evaluating that when we had the T-Mobile litigation. And what it failed to do is go far enough south to cover down around the bend, to the bend on 1A. So, yeah, so there are opportunities for more smaller placements and potentially placements on the tops of buildings or in church steeples and those kind of things. And that lets me segue to your bylaw. The bylaw is locked in the 20th century. And you're not alone. This, this has happened to a lot of municipalities that after the Telecommunications Act of 1996, passed bylaws in the late 90s, early 2000s, dealing with what was then known as dealing with what was then known as cellular tower deployment, which were 190-foot-tall towers that were every five or six miles. And so everybody was concerned about having a 190-foot-tall tower next door. And and the thought was that, well, gee, you can get a lot of coverage from a 190-foot-tall tower. Let's put him in the industrial area and be done with it. And as we've seen since then, it's evolved, they want more coverage, they have shorter towers.
There's still proposals for 140-foot towers, not infrequently, but depending on the area they want to serve. So we, one of the challenges with the current bylaw is it does kind of conflates the concept of a cell tower in a wireless facility. And at the time, this was written, the the thinking was that a wireless facility needs a cell tower.
I'm going to have Martha call you.
And what we've learned since then is the cell sites can be mounted on buildings, they can be mounted on cell towers, they can be mounted on water tanks. So it's good to regulate wireless communications facilities in general throughout town and have rules and performance requirements for that. And then, you know, on top of that, regulate cell towers. And maybe you want to confine cell towers to the places that you've decided community here that you can accept cell towers placing. So and and I talked to Martha about ways that we can sever those two concepts in in the bylaw and and work that out. There are towns like Wellesley that don't have wireless overlay districts. They don't allow wireless facility, conceptually, a cell tower anywhere. But it's so carefully regulated that they haven't really gotten any cell towers in places where they don't want them. And they've been able to kind of guide the wireless companies to where everybody can agree that the wireless facilities can go. And that's worked for them a little better than many towns have fared where they have a wireless overlay district, but it's in the industrial district in the lower left of town. And a company comes in, wants to put a cell tower on the upper right of town. And the company says, well, you don't allow cell towers in this part of town, so you don't, you know, we we demand that you give us a variance or we'll take it for it. So the best solution for that is to identify, like we're trying to do here, areas where, kind of what I call soft spots, where if you could find a place for a cell tower and get it into your your bylaws, when the the site acquisition agents come in looking for a cell site for for their their customer, the wireless company, they're going to go to the bylaw first, and they're going to look for the the lowest hanging fruit, which will be the the sites that are clearly indicated in the bylaw as being acceptable to newly. So that's sort of the next step on this with the with the bylaw and with the our the coverage analysis that we've done is to have a community discussion about how how you might move that ball forward on adding properties to the cell tower overlay district. A lot of the other comments that I have in this bylaw are about things that are, at the time, they probably seemed like a good idea, but, you know, they they may actually be overreaching because they're asking for more information that's necessary, or they're setting what I call giant setbacks. You have to be 300 feet away from the property line, and what does that mean? You need to have a property that you can, they've got 600-foot diameter circle in the middle of, and it creates unintended consequences. Monitoring and other kinds of regulations that, for the most part, don't get used, in fact, almost entirely, and end up just being administrative burden for the town and a regulatory burden for the applicant. So I have a bunch of proposals in here to streamline the the wording of the bylaw so that it it addresses the real core things that are of concern to a community and that the community can control. And with that, I'll stop talking.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good information.
There'll be a quiz. Yeah, so I guess, you know, the question is next steps and how can I help? You want to get bylaw changes ready for for town meeting, for the warrant, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's been the goal, and we're you know, coming up tight on our schedule now for doing that. So I guess one question I have is I mean, it it sounds like if we're doing the bylaw revision, it makes sense to revise the boundaries of our overlay district at the same time, trying to have a community meeting in order to get between now and getting something on the town meeting warrant is probably a little ambitious.
Well, we we wouldn't have to, in order to do the bylaw amendment, would we have to identify the potential cell tower sites or just expand the the overlay district to accommodate?
Generally, the way overlay districts for cell towers work is that they're, they'll define either an existing zoning district, like an industrial district, or they'll define specific area, or they'll go right down to a specific property. And the Attorney General has approved bylaws that have a table of specific properties that have been selected. I think you have to be careful that they're not all town properties and that they're they're chosen by some kind of rational approach like like this. So in that respect, i- it does require kind of a dialogue in getting the community on board with the idea of adding parcels. Maybe we haven't decided which ones yet in different parts of town that are the soft spots where there is pressure for a cell tower. But if that's something that you think is a longer process, then I think there are still things that you can do to to change the the meat of the bylaw with respect to all these other kind of issues that we we've talked about. You could do it in two steps.
Right, and also set up the regulations for the grant of location so then we can, you know, deal with, say, the Verizon proposal.
Right, right. And that is question, how the town wants to handle that, whether it's simply a select board activity because it's a grant of location.
Right, right.
Or whether there's some consultation with the planning board that wants to be included in that.
Yeah, I had a brief conversation with town council about it, who said, you know, absolutely, grant of location makes makes sense, but we didn't talk about trying to do any kind of, you know, interface between the two boards.
Well, the grant of location then then takes the location out of zoning. Am I understanding that correctly?
Well, it's it's, and I've 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 seen this debated quite fiercely at times, but the general principle has been that zoning doesn't cover public ways. If you think about all the things that are in zoning, there's districts, it's land use, it's setbacks, it's building heights, you know, there may be a design criteria, all this kind of stuff, and even construction and runoff and all that, that that that's all kind of highway administration. And that's done through a different set of of controls. And then you add public utilities to the public way. Well, we're used to the idea that when the phone company or the electric company need to come in and add a new pole or replace a pole or run some conduit from a pole to some destination, they have to communicate that with the select board so that they can deal with the issues of occupancy of the the public way. So when the FCC kind of layered on the wireless companies, it sort of naturally follows that it's not not a zoning issue. On the other hand, I have seen zoning bylaws and ordinances that regulate placements in the public way. And wireless companies have tolerated that because at least it's a process that they can follow. But however the town chooses to address it, it's got to be consistent with the FCC's very narrow criteria for deploying in the public way.
So then the grant of location would be, if you use that approach, would be confined to the public way?
Yes.
In other words, you wouldn't put a, under that criteria, you you wouldn't necessarily put a cell tower at Triton, for example?
Well, if you think about what's in the public way, it's utility poles that are 30, 35 feet tall, and you're going to put a trashcan-sized antenna on top of the pole, it's not going to have the same kind of coverage as a 100-foot-tall cell tower. So there are different kinds of applications. And Plum Island is a a plum location, a ripe plum location for, sorry, for the small cells that would would go in the public way. Okay.
So what do you all think? Does it make sense to go, you know, go forward with the revision of the bylaw and and potentially set up some grant of location regulations? And then next step would be to identify?
I think so.
Parcels.
Well, we're not going to, yeah, we're not going to identify parcels in time for this town meeting. So if we at least modernize the bylaw, we've made a big step in the right direction.
Make it a little less onerous for providers.
Now, what that'll do for the interim, when the overlay district hasn't been expanded, is it will enable a wireless company to come in and propose a cell tower and seek a variance for the height at a parcel of their choosing, which is more orderly because then you have clear rules for approving a wireless facility at that non-overlay district site if we if we change the bylaws. Right now, as I was saying before, if they propose a cell tower outside the overlay district, it's arguable as to whether this bylaw even applies to that and whether it's simply a variance that they require to to get their approval. So doing the bylaw changes would would be a good thing, even if you haven't got the rest of it together yet.
That's what we should do.
Can I go home now? That's the question we're all asking ourselves.
Question of the night.
Well, we want to thank you very much, we appreciate
Thank you.
All this
You're welcome.
Information and insight, and I guess we'll
Very good, very cool.
You've been watching this on TV?
No, no, I, no, listening.
Okay, well.
Working to to help fashion our bylaw recommendation. Do we have this in the timeframe, you think?
I don't know, I mean, where where are you with your your thoughts on on the revisions that we would want to make? Are we looking at completely whole cloth replacement?
I think not. I just reviewed my comments, you know, as you've probably done this too. You've looked at something you haven't looked at for a month or two, and it's like, I wrote that? Yeah, I reviewed my comments, and and I think a lot of that is a roadmap to just editing the thing. And I could do a quick clean out of what I proposed were superfluous elements and reorganize the elements that I suggest reorganizing and see what we've got left as a starter.
Okay.
And fly that up the flagpole.
Let's do it.
Bingo.
All right, great.
Give us a little bit more time.
Because we're under the gun.
We are under the gun, you know, I think we can, we were originally supposed to refer things to the selectmen tonight. That's obviously not happening.
Right.
It's because they're all home in bed.
Well, we would have, we would have, and we could do it in 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 theory, but we just, we don't have enough that, I don't think they would feel comfortable kind of doing it in the abstract.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would be my guess, you know, we should have at least some.
So if we could wrap this in two weeks, maybe?
Wrap it by our next meeting.
Right, yeah, before our next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what we're trying to do.
Okay, along with the dimensional requirements.
Okay. Do we want to talk about anything about the dimensional requirements?
Quick, I guess, I'm I'm kind of stuck. We, correct me if I'm wrong, Martha, but thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks.
So Martha, please jump in and correct me if I'm wrong here. But we we sent the dimensional regulations that we had talked about at the last meeting to town council.
I did give them to her, right.
Right, and she doesn't, she was, had issues with the provisions regarding driveways?
Well, she didn't, it wasn't that she had issues with the provisions regarding driveways, but I think we were, we were kind of using those to set a minimum lot width. And so she wasn't totally comfortable with doing it that way.
So where does that leave us?
So I think I think that leaves us at probably, you know, maybe, maybe we just set set the dimension if we were looking at, you know, 20, potentially 20 feet wide for a driveway, certain distance, certain length, I can't speak anymore, and 10-foot setbacks, maybe it would be a 40, 40-foot minimum width, going back to the buildable area.
So we'd have a fixed, fixed amount?
A fixed amount.
Rather than the variable based on 200 feet, 400 feet, or however long the driveway was.
Yep.
And then you could still do your circle and square. Is that right?
And the and the 90-foot to the setback line, 90%, 90% of the frontage.
She was okay with that?
She seemed to be okay with that.
I mean, I
She was gonna, she was gonna review it, and I haven't.
She she wanted, she suggested we look at Redding's bylaw, which I pulled.
Actually, no, it was George who suggested that.
Oh, it was George? Oh, I thought it was town council, okay. Because Redding, I mean, they have a nice bylaw, but from what I can read, it it essentially takes the same approach that they took in Andover, except rather than, if you recall, it requires a certain percentage to the rear building line. And in Redding, they take it to the front building line, which was sort of, I think, we rejected. Well, I I guess we were just kind of waiting on town council on this, right?
So, I mean, I think, you know, I think the approach is is there and just kind of making sure that.
Just basically making a few lighter changes and it's
Right.
Just kind of, it's basically there.
Right.
Okay, I I misunderstood, I I thought she wanted us to look at at Redding.
No, it was George, it was my, my, it was George who suggested it.
Okay, so then basically we're just waiting for for her to get back to us on the other, get get her comments. All right, well, now they've been doing anything for two weeks anyway, so hopefully we'll have.
Right, so I mean, the goal, the goal should be to have everything in place in two weeks and then refer it to the selectmen.
But even once they refer it back to us for a public hearing, we're still at that stage, I think it's still tweak it.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And and council said we can, you know, we can have a public hearing basically at any time up until town meeting. But our goal has always been to have it, you know, far enough in advance. So if if there are tweaks that need to be made or whatever, and the selectmen are getting the the final language before they vote on the law.
Sure.
Well, we're really close, right? Really close.
Yeah, I think so.
Mary, you're still there, that was such a a burst of energy, thank you, Mary. You just, you gave us another 30 seconds, I think.
Yes, it just sounds like we're, we're getting there on that one.
All right. Okay. I see, I see new business, I see the word done next to it, is that correct?
Yeah, that's right.
At 8:35, January Financial reported at 8:40.
Yeah, I think, did I get that?
You did, yes, okay. Town plans report at 8:45.
Um, we're, I think we're going to skip that.
Okay, liaison reports? Ah, please, that was, let me see, I've got it right here. The planning board, January 20th, 2020 financial report, payroll invoices. Number one, payroll warrants for town planner and planning administrator, PR 20-14 for pay period ending 1/4 2020. BSPR 20-15 for pay period ending 1/18 2020. Number two is planning board members stipend 7/19 through 12/19 1/20 20. And finally, the PB expense invoices, employee expenses reimbursed and then tailor 1/21 20. We're required to do that, that's why we had to read that financial report into the... Okay, I think we're, we're good for today. I would love to thank everyone for the long, long meeting, I'm sorry, it was such a slugfest, but...
It felt like it was 100 degrees in here for a little.
It, it was, it was very warm in here for a little bit, but it's, it's cooled down, and I think we can, we can breathe a little bit, and we'll hopefully get to our next steps where we need to go. So thank you everyone very much.
Thank you for letting me participate, guys, I appreciate it.
Mary, we, we thank you, and we hope, we, we hope that you're feeling better soon.
I'll be fine, I'll be fine, thank you.
Would you like, would you like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting, Mary?
I would like to make a motion right now to adjourn the meeting.
Wonderful, would someone like to...
Second.
A second.
Oh, it's been second, discussion of motion. All right, all in favor? Roll call, vote, oh, so, oh, thank you, roll call, vote. Mary, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Pete? Yes. Woody? Yes. Martha? Yes, okay, we're there, good, thank you everyone, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay. Bye-bye.